From our executive session, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Our next item of business is public comment. We have four in-person comments this evening. Welcome our first committee member. Hello, good evening.
Hi.
You can sit there, please state your name and your address. Thank you.
Laurie Calucci, 60, Agostino Drive. So first, to the community, I appreciate all you're doing. No one is perfect. We all acknowledge there is a pandemic, but we have to learn to live with it. Everyone has a different level of comfort, and that's okay. Do not ridicule somebody else for not feeling the same way as you. With that said, I do feel that Dr. Brand's email to the parents was completely trying to point fingers. You stated in your comments last Wednesday that you were fully committed to keeping kids in school. Then Saturday night, we got an email that we are going remote, which you then blamed the community for. Everyone is doing the best that they can do. This is a virus. Mask wearers get it, non-mask wearers get it, and on the other extreme, there are those that don't comply with guidelines, and they never get it. There is no rhyme or reason as to who are going to be the lucky ones who will spear it. Everyone is doing their best. The kids are doing their best. Even if you think it's not good enough, they are doing what they can. They are kids and teenagers. Stop punishing them. Remember yourself as a child. It would have been terribly hard for you, too. Stop blaming the community. We are doing what we can. I am here because my children have the right to a public education. The education plan right now in this town is inadequate. They all deserve better, whether you are remote or hybrid. People have left the system, do not expect them to return. Others are planning their exit for next year. Things need to improve. My sophomore is struggling. Being remote more than in school has affected him greatly. His grades are suffering, socially struggling, even if he cannot fully socialize with his peers in school. At least he is seeing them when he goes there. When we got the email the other night, he just put his head down and said, "No, I just want to go to school." He's on a 504 plan, has ADHD, has executive functioning issues, his needs are not being met. Asynchronous work is problematic. He cannot do these assignments without supervision. He feels uncomfortable going for extra help through Zoom. He needs in-person help, even if it's six feet away. At this point, I have essentially given up. My seniors have lost half of their junior year, and now their senior year. These kids will have no memories. Their yearbooks will be empty. They have not been able to experience any of the fun you are supposed to have your senior year. There is no dances, no large gatherings, very limited sports with minimal to no fans in the stand, no prom, and I suppose no graduation. These are all memories that we have. These kids should, too. I can only speak in regards to the high school level, but the remote hybrid plan has been terribly inconsistent teacher to teacher. I know DESI has set new guidelines in hoping there will be changes made for the good. I hope the way to achieve these guidelines is to not continue with a full remote learning plan. Hopefully, that is being discussed tonight. The remote kids deserve better, too. They are not getting the education they deserve either. The simple fix is to livestream from the classroom. Not sure if this lies with the teachers' union or administration. The cohort kids at school would be taught, the cohort kids at home would be taught, and the remote kids would be taught. Also, any child or teacher that has to be quarantined would still be able to attend class from home. Most other towns are doing it. There is also some teachers in our district currently that are doing it. It can be done. It will help all, those that want their kids in school, and those that are more comfortable at home, and those that are quarantined. It will be a change in a learning curve, but many of us have to make some extreme changes to how we practice and work. Might not be easy at first, but it is doable, and our children deserve this. I am happy to see that you sent out the email last night trying to clarify the numbers. I know you had originally stated that we were higher than all the surrounding towns. The image that you had posted was from the DESI website with numbers from other towns. After speaking with DESI about this, they stated that it was an honor system for the towns to report. If a town had zero noted, it was because they just did not report their numbers, because at this time, very few towns have a zero to report. So I checked into this. I did look at Burka's dashboard based on their superintendent's reports for the time period of January 8th through the 12th, which was a four-day period. They had 32 new cases. We, for the week of January 17th through 13th, were 29. So very similar, let you let us to believe they had no cases. You also may note on several occasions that there is not high transmission going on in the schools. But yet, we continue to change to remote plans. Not sure if you are inferring that sports is a spreader, but from what I see, there's approximately 125 athletes competing now in hockey, basketball, and swimming, and approximately six have tested positive. That's about 4%. If sports was a super-spreeder, and the numbers would be much higher, and half the teams would be down with the virus. These kids are following all of the guidelines given to them. There are even teachers from the district whose children are playing it. And to not have taken the active approach, some have taken the active approach even to stay in quarantine after they were cleared to return, just to keep others safe. We have to stop blaming these children. Masks are worn in school, masks are worn when playing sports. If rules have been followed, I don't understand why we can't try to have some normalcy. I do see sports on the agenda tonight, and in hoping there is a positive discussion in regards to the possible cancellation of the season. We did start the season in hybrid. There are also towns that are remote that are still doing sports. I know last week you mentioned that there was a meeting scheduled with the superintendents to address the parents attending the games of their children. I have been told that this meeting never happened. I hope I was informed wrong. There is no blame being placed here. We have room to improve as a district. All entities need to be working together to improve this issue. It's time for people to stop bashing each other, and we all need to work together to achieve a plan that would benefit all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, just one second. So please state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Carmelina Bernazani, 7 Chapman Avenue. Good evening. I am the parent of a senior, and my son is one of the assistant captains on the hockey team. This has been one of the most trying years that I have had in my life, and I can only imagine what it's like for the kids and the teens in this time, and especially at this district. For my son, and I imagine most of the seniors, it has been the worst, and I state, the worst experience. They lost half their junior year, and now their senior year. I wanted to start with the letter you sent. I opened it up, and I have to be honest with you. I was disgusted. I'm disappointed that we're going remote, but with that having been said, words do have a meaning. You mentioned you had hoped that everyone would do the right thing after the holidays. Keep in mind, when you address the community, it includes those who are doing their best, and the students that have worked hard and diligent to stay home, sacrifice their social and mental well-being for the hopes that they can continue to come to school and play sports. They are fearful, fearful that this will be taken away from them, and you've done a nice job. Yes, perhaps others could do better in the community, but the tone is divisive and blameful. We have enough of that. We all need to be there for each other. We need solutions, and we don't need finger pointing. I believe that kids should be in school. I have a high risk tolerance, and I understand that others do not. They should partake in sports and activities safely, and parents should be able to watch their kids. I went to 22 games, Yad soccer, another 32. What do we do when we go out? Masks and distance. CDC guidelines state and recommend that kids should be in-person learning. There is a low risk of transmission. This is statistical facts. The kids need quality education, social and mental interaction for their well-being. And yes, there is always where it risks. Every day you go out. My husband goes to work every day, mask six feet. My sister, who never left the house, never left the house five times. I couldn't even visit her unless I stayed home for two weeks. Ordered everything. Guess what? COVID found her. Should be thinking about that. You compare our communities to others for COVID numbers. That's not really needed. Again, we don't need to be shamed. If we're going to compare ourselves to towns about how they're doing in comparison to numbers, perhaps we should really compare our district to local districts and private schools. They have done some good work. Some schools are more successful, other districts better. Why are we not learning from them? Why are we not asking questions? Why are we not being innovative? In-person, my niece, five days, full-time school, September, they have COVID numbers, sports, no issues. My mother, who is 70 years old, works in a school district. They're full-time, haven't shut down since August. It can be done, because there's guidelines that can be followed. I have to say, I've been very disappointed with this administration. I know you've tried to work hard. We've all had to make sacrifices, and it's been a horrible year. But I don't think some of these decisions are sensible. I think they lack a holistic approach. They're not only getting deprived of a good education, but their mental and social well-being is at risk. We are not focused enough on that. Statistics show children under the age of 11, 24% increase in ER visits for mental-related issues, 32% for 11 above. That is a disease, too, and it is a result of COVID. And I think that there should be some consideration in that. The hybrid model isn't effective. The three days at their home is three days off. I don't think sending them home with assignments is effective modeling. My daughter is in college. She does hybrid. It's full streaming. And she said, even though that's not great, she says it's still horrible. She suggests everybody not go to school and save your money. But at least, she said, it's better than if I had to do it all online. With that being said, I'm going to end it with this. I'm about to order my cap and gown for my kid. I have yet to do it, because I get sick to my stomach thinking that this should be a joyous time. And although it was never going to be a joyous time, given the circumstances, I would have expected that we would have done a better job for it. He will not have the milestones that should be achieved, the memories that should be made. And yes, it was never going to be the same. But understand, COVID is the virus. It's the decisions that we make around COVID that has significantly impacted our children. If there's anything I have to say, if anyone's listening, I would recommend that everybody look at private schools, because there you have a voice. And yes, it costs money. If I had to do it all over again, I would have sent my kids to private school, and I would have done that gladly, working three jobs. And that's something on you, because you're losing numbers. So do a better job. They deserve it. Thank you for your time, and thank you for working as hard as you do, but it just needs to be better. Thank you.
Good evening. Please state your name and address for the minutes.
My name is Leanne Banks, 38A, Jigwood Road. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I have two students in Wilmington High School, and I'm here tonight because I'm no longer able to sit idly by. I need you to hear me. I need you to hear the other speakers tonight. Remote learning may work for some, but it's not working for most. Our kids need to be in school. Schools are safe. The data, the science, and the other school districts have proven that in-school learning is possible. DESI states that unless there is a proven in-school transmission, which there hasn't been, you are expected to prioritize in-person learning. You're not doing that. The CDC says in-person learning is safe if the schools follow the guidelines. To the best of my knowledge, the schools are following the guidelines. So the kids should be in the schools. Mental health, it's real. Our kids' mental health is suffering. The American Academy of Pediatrics says children absolutely need to return to in-school learning for healthy development and well-being. The AAP also has guidelines regarding screen time that we are dangerously exceeding. Kids are sitting in front of computer screens in excess of six hours a day, most often without instruction, no collaboration, and no peer contact. They are frustrated. They are disinterested. This is not healthy development and well-being. This is not learning. This is not teaching, and this most certainly is not okay. Why are those with the very least amount of risk the ones that are getting punished the most? There are 2,830 students currently enrolled in Wilmington Public Schools. There are seven cases. If we want to use the 29 number, that's fine. If there are seven cases, it's less than a quarter of a percent. If we use 29, it's 1%. They are not spreading COVID in schools. It can be done safely. The superintendent's answer to everything is to shut it all down every time. And you sit here every other week, and you tell us how sorry you are, but you haven't done anything to make it better. The lack of action and the real leadership from the people in this room is unacceptable. You have failed to put our children's, my children's, needs first. You need to act. You need to make better decisions, and you need to get our kids back in school. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else out there? Is there anyone else out there?
There was one.
Thank you so much. All right, moving to approval of items by consensus. Approval of minutes, January 13th, 2021. Clear motion? Mr. Bjork, seconded by Mrs. Newhouse, all in favor? That is unanimous. We have acceptance of Global Partners ExxonMobil Educational Alliance Program grant to Woburn Street Elementary School in the amount of $500. There is a memo. Is there a motion? Mrs. Burns, seconded by Mr. Bjork, all in favor of accepting that generous donation? That is unanimous. Dr. Brand, do you want to say anything about that? I don't have it.
No, that's fine.
Okay. Thank you very much for that donation to the Woburn Street School. We have our second reading approval, school committee policies, AC, IHBG, civil rights grievance procedure, and the Title IX sexual harassment grievance procedure. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mr. Ragsdale, second. Mrs. Burns, all in favor? That is unanimous. We have warrants FS 28, 29, 30, 31. Thank you, Mr. Fenely, seconded by Mrs. Newhouse, all in favor? That's unanimous. We have payroll ending 1/20/21. Mrs. Burns, seconded by Mr. Samaha, all in favor? That's unanimous. We have warrants sped 13, 14, 15, 16, and 17. Is there a motion? Mr. Fenely, seconded by Mr. Samaha, all in favor? Four and three abstentions, Mrs. Dixie. All right, we are on to our superintendent's report. Dr. Brand.
Thank you very much, and good evening. Just before I turn it over to Ms. Elliott, who is going to provide you with an update on the tentative revisions to the structured learning time work. You'll recall, and members of the community who may have been watching last week, that our district, like a good portion of districts, not all, but many throughout the Commonwealth, based upon new DESI requirements that the Commission of Education presented to the Board of Education, we were required to make some adjustments to our schedules. And just to clarify, that's the schedules at the elementary, middle, and high school level. We've had a number of working groups who have worked very hard over the course of five separate meetings that began on January the 4th to critically look at our current schedules, examine the necessary changes to bring those schedules in line with the new requirements that were passed by the Board of Education in late December. And we are pleased to be able to share with you what the tentative schedules look like now that will need to be put into place quickly. So with that, Ms. Elliott.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. This evening, I will do a brief slideshow, really summarizing the recommendations from the Structured Learning Committee that has been meeting since January 4th. So as a quick overview, we did talk about this a bit last week, but just to recap, the new guidelines require districts to provide live instruction to students, whether it's in-person or synchronous remote, for a total of 35 hours over 10 days span, so a two-school-week span. And it may be averaged for a district to reach that 35-hour threshold. This excludes pre-K and kindergarten, so we were looking at grades 1 through 12. The committee has, as Dr. Brand mentioned, been meeting consistently since we returned from the holiday break. So a huge thank you to the committee members who have been giving their time and really thoughtful effort in making these recommendations. So the recommendations from the committee are broken up into, originally, we started as an elementary group, looking at grades 1 through 5, but the recommendations are actually specific to grades 1 through 3. Then there will be separate recommendations for grades 4 and 5, and grades 6 through 8, and 9 through 12. So this first slide talks about the schedule for grades 1 through 3, which we're proposing that the actual schedule, days that students are in school, will not be impacted. Students in Cohorts A and B will follow their existing hybrid schedule, where Cohort A students attend in-person on Mondays and Thursdays. Cohort B students attend in-person on Tuesdays and Fridays. Both cohorts combined will continue to participate in synchronous remote instruction on Wednesday mornings and asynchronous remote instruction, asynchronous activities in the afternoon. But what is new is every day, Monday through Friday, with the exception of Wednesday, where they're already synchronous in the morning. Teachers will provide a 30-minute morning check-in with students for both cohorts at the start of each school day. In-person students will be in the classroom, and at-home students will log into the teacher's virtual meeting room daily in the morning for a 30-minute check-in. In addition to that, teachers will provide a 45-minute synchronous reading lesson during the day for the students in person, but will also have the students at home logging in virtually to participate in that 45-minute reading lesson. And that will be a daily event. So students in Cohort A will participate in synchronous morning meeting and reading block on Tuesdays and Fridays. Students in Cohort B will participate in the morning meeting and reading block on Mondays and Thursdays. There will be no changes to students who are fully remote in Cohort C for the elementary grades 1 through 3. This is an example of that schedule, demonstrating Cohort A in blue. They're in-person on Monday and Thursday. And you can see in light blue, Cohort A has their morning check-in, and they have their synchronous reading block, as well as asynchronous work provided for the remainder of that day on Tuesdays and Fridays. And both cohorts, and the flip for Cohort B would be on Tuesdays and Fridays, they would be in-person, and they would have their synchronous reading block and morning check-in on Mondays and Thursdays, and would be then provided with additional asynchronous work for the remainder of the day. Grades 4 through 5, the schedule is consistent with what I just mentioned for 1 through 3 as far as the cohorts A and B continuing to meet on their currently scheduled days, and Wednesdays being the same structure. What's new for grades 4 and 5 is that these students will also have the daily morning check-in, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. They will also participate in a synchronous reading lesson, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. And so students in Cohort A will participate in the morning meeting and the synchronous reading lesson on Tuesdays and Fridays. Students in Cohort B will participate on Mondays and Thursdays. And then new on Wednesdays for grades 4 and 5, students will participate in an additional or in a specialist lesson, 45-minute block on Wednesday afternoons. They'll continue to have asynchronous work for the remainder of that time, but will also have a 45-minute scheduled lesson with one of the specialist teachers during the afternoon. Again, for this group, there will be no change to the fully remote students in Cohort C. They will continue with their teachers as is. This is the schedule for grades 4 and 5. Very similar to grades 1 and 3. The only difference here is that in addition to the morning check-in meeting and the reading block, they will also have the 45-minute special on Wednesday afternoon. The next grade span is middle school. Here, we are looking at, so the schedule will be that students in Cohorts A and B, our current existing cohorts, will follow the existing hybrid schedule with Cohort A students attending in-person on Mondays and Thursdays. B will be in-person on Tuesdays and Fridays. Students in both cohorts A and B combined will continue to participate in synchronous remote instruction on Wednesday mornings, asynchronous in the afternoon. What is new is that, and some of it's been happening, but it will be consistent across the board. There will be a new daily morning meeting on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday for all students at home to log in in the morning. Students will participate in this during the first period. They'll be taking attendance during that time. School updates, announcements, et cetera, will take place during that morning check-in. So this will happen for students in Cohort A on Tuesdays and Fridays, and students in Cohort B on Mondays and Thursdays. Also new for the middle school grades is synchronous instruction for Cohorts A and B will take place on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Students will now participate in synchronous remote instruction during their scheduled classes on Tuesdays and Thursdays, as indicated below. So students in Cohort A will participate in all of their scheduled classes from home by logging in virtually with the students in person on Tuesdays in their teacher's classroom. So they will follow their full schedule along with their in-person peers. And Cohort B students will do the same thing, but on Thursdays, logging into the teacher's, each classroom's virtual classroom to participate from home with the live instruction happening in the classroom. There will be no, so on the asynchronous days, they will continue to work asynchronously on Monday and Friday. So each group will have only one asynchronous day. They'll still have the morning check-in, and they'll have only one day of work that they're working asynchronously. And there's no proposed changes for Cohort C at the middle school level as well. You can get a sense of this schedule for the middle school, where the darker green shows for Cohort A, the days that they are in-person, and then the lighter green, so there's three different shades of green. The middle green, if you will, is synchronous when they're working from home, but they're virtual all day. And then the lightest green on Friday, you can see Cohort A is asynchronous on Friday. And for Cohort B, they are in-person on Tuesday and Friday. On Thursday, all day, they follow their full schedule synchronously. On Mondays, they will be asynchronous, aside from their morning meeting. So each cohort will have the equivalent of one and a half days of asynchronous. The rest will either be in-person or live. The high school. So the updates to the hybrid schedule. We will continue to have Cohort A students be in-person on Mondays and Thursdays, B on Tuesdays and Fridays. All students in Cohorts A, B, and C, in this case, will participate in live synchronous remote instruction on Wednesday mornings and complete asynchronous work on Wednesday afternoons. Scheduling blocks will remain the same, 84 minutes, four blocks per day on Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays. Students who are in Cohort C will participate in live synchronous instruction for all of their scheduled classes, along with their Cohort A and B counterparts. So on Cohort A in-person days, Mondays and Thursdays, synchronous remote instruction will be provided for both Cohorts B and C. So to recap, students who are in-person, Cohort A, will be in class, but students in Cohorts B and C will be live streaming into the classroom in Cohorts B and C will be live-streaming into the classroom to participate in the virtual instruction that's happening in the classroom. This will happen daily, so every student in Cohorts A, B, and C will either be in-person, or they will be sinking into their classes, following their full schedule. The only days that they will have asynchronous instruction at the high school level will be the afternoon on Wednesdays, when they have asynchronous activities provided. So our hybrid model now for the high school will allow Cohorts A and B to be in-person two full days, and to be synchronous the rest of the week remotely from home, with the exception of Wednesday afternoon. And Cohort C will be synchronous with their teachers and their peers every day, except for the Wednesday afternoon as well. Attendance will be taken daily and entered into Aspen the first instructional block, but attendance will also be taken during subsequent instructional blocks to ensure You can see the schedule here, basically what I just described, and you can get the sense of what those blocks look like with the blue day and white day for the high school, and what their block schedule looks like. So the new hybrid models, you can see the breakdown here that we are with these proposed changes to this schedule, these schedules. The grades one through three will be having thirty-one hours of structured learning time, so hours that are actual instructional lessons, live, either in-person or synchronous. Grades four through five will have, four and five will have thirty-two point five hours over a ten-day spirit, span. Middle school has forty hours, and the high school is forty-four point five hours. Averaging the total across the district would be thirty-seven hours over that ten-day span, and the goal was to reach thirty-five hours over that ten-day span. So we are well within that, this, these recommendations are well within the department's guidelines. And the additional component that was added as part of the guidelines was that there had to be daily live interaction, even if the remainder of the day was asynchronous, there had to be a live check-in between students and educators, and we've accomplished that through these recommended schedules. So at this point, we are looking at the implementation plan. So these new schedules are expected to go into effect the week of January twenty-fifth for schools that are operating in the hybrid model. So Shawshank Elementary and West Intermediate are planning to launch these schedules, starting on Monday, the twenty-fifth. The high school, middle school, Woburn Street, and North Intermediate will begin implementing these new schedules when they return to hybrid learning model. Given the time, the limited window of time that was provided to develop, negotiate, and implement these revisions, we anticipate that there will inevitably be challenges encountered with logistics, technology during the implementation process. We're looking at providing the right tools for teachers to be able to do this successfully, offer them the types of training they need, and the troubleshooting to make it work successfully, and adjusting schedules that need to be adjusted accordingly. So we appreciate the understanding of the, of the community as we make these transitions and move forward with these revised schedules. We will continue to negotiate these terms as well. We're well on our way through negotiation process, and hopefully we'll be able to tie that piece up soon as well. And that is the last slide. If you have any questions, I am happy to take questions.
Thank you. Mrs. Brand.
So quick question with regards to, of course, to the grade with Cohort C. So can you just refresh my memory? How much of my construction and my big plan would get?
They are following their full schedules for a full school day, all day long. So they log in, they have set teachers that are specific to just supporting Cohort C. So at the elementary level, they have an assigned teacher, they log in first thing in the morning, they follow a full school day schedule with their teacher and/or specialist, you know, throughout the course of the day. So they're exceeding the, the recommended number of hours for, for remote students. If our district were designated as a fully-remote district, we would need to be meeting forty hours over the two-week span. I haven't actually looked at the hours, but our students are following the typical school schedule as if they were in-person, so they're far exceeding that.
Right, and it's all synchronous, yeah.
It's all synchronous, yeah. And the same at the middle school.
Okay, and my next question is, I think it's great, these daily check-in and morning blocks, which I know in previous years we discussed, you know, especially at the middle school, about creating a sense of community. So can you share, if you're able to, how, how are these check-ins? What does it encompass? Is there going to be a curriculum besides the attendance piece? Is there going to be a topic, ten-minute, fifteen-minute topic that, that, you know, are going to kind of guide, you know, not curriculum, not like learning curriculum, but whether it be social-emotional, whether it be, I mean, what is that?
Sure.
What do you think?
So, so it will really be specific by grade span in school, but, so for example, at the elementary, at the elementary grades, they typically already have some type of morning meeting or morning check-in, so it will follow suit with what they would normally do at their specific grade level. You know, there are those routines that have to happen every morning that will be a part of that, but I would assume that many teachers would follow suit with how they've been doing it, which is that check-in, sometimes topics around, you know, the social-emotional pieces of the day, just to see how students are doing and their well-being, talking about previous assignments possibly, and what's to come for the day ahead, those kinds of conversations. I know at the middle school, it's more of a, you know, school-wide opportunity to hear announcements and attendance, and, you know, and I know at the elementary level, they're doing the Pledge of Allegiance, and all of those typical routines that happen at the start of the day. So I wouldn't, this will be brand-new for all of our teachers, trying to do this with students in-person and students at home. So I believe we will be working to, you know, get it up and running, and then as teachers become more comfortable with that process, I'm sure that structure will probably become more routine for them.
I just would like for, you know, some kind of structure to it, besides just the normal, you know, I think that's a great idea, the announcement saying this is your phone line, but I know that, you know, if, when we had this in the middle school schedule back in, like, say, two thousand and fourteen, when they revised that, they were hoping to include that aspect, whether he really built themselves as their own community, you know, community sort of, PDIS or something. So I just, you know, I just would need to have that guys in mind. Yeah, I mean, it's a transition, and, you know, maybe, maybe, you know, staff certainly savvy enough, I think, outside of us, to drive something to engage, get these kids engaged to show up every morning, but, you know, just something rather than, you know, I want to say that's thoughtful, I have those big expectations of, so, thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Raxton.
I just want to add something to Ms. Elliott's response, which is at the elementary level. It was already also contemplated that this could be a flexible time, that could also be used for sped services, for reading interventions, for counselor to meet with students, some of those things as well. But not everyone had to be all together in the same room with the homeroom teacher or the whole classroom teacher, but there were also options to make use of that time for those types of purposes as well.
Thank you.
If I could just add to that, that some of those schedules, those services are already scheduled during that time, so, and, you know, students have receiving services during their asynchronous days, sometimes during that block. So rather than disrupting those schedules, we would be able to still allow for that schedule to maintain. Thank you for reminding me of that.
Mrs. Newhouse.
Just out of curiosity, because I, you hear it a lot from parent, families in other districts, and I know we were, it was something that our district didn't want to do at one point, was the complete streaming live, like you're doing with the high school. Was that, and I think it's great that we're going to be doing that at the high school, was that considered at all for the lower levels, or, and, you know, curious why it may not be being done?
Yeah, so we really, we, the, we, when we started this process, the committee really generated, each of the different subcommittees generated all of the possible solutions. You know, we said, even if we vetted this back in the summer and said, no, for whatever reason, let's put it back on the table. So each committee really looked at all of the potential options. Ultimately, the, what was, I will say that the middle school and the high school, because of their structures, quickly said, we really think that this is the direction we need to go with our kids sinking in to classes. At the elementary level, the structure is so different in the sense that, you know, they're self-contained for the good part of the day, and that the developmental age of the students and their ability to be on screen all day, and the management of students in that grade, both in-person and remote, would be a challenge. So we really looked at it as a whole in the district, because they did try multiple different approaches to get to where we got with the recommendations that they made. And it was, when we looked at each of the different options, we felt that this was the most developmentally appropriate, the least disruptive to our existing cohorts' schedules. We recognized that we did not want to say, okay, we need to eliminate what's existing now of Cohort A and B and shift it all around, because people have been planning around that and organizing their childcare routines and schedules. So we wanted to try and be cognizant of that, and also cognizant of the amount of change that we were adding to young children's schedules and routines. So when we looked at it as a whole across the district, we felt that developmentally, even splitting it up between the grades one through three and four to five, we were able to increase synchronous instruction and definitely increase the daily interaction for all students, and we did it incrementally, which we felt was developmentally appropriate.
Thank you. Mr. Smaha.
Yeah, so for the, I guess, I'm thinking about the communication for this to families, so families, especially at the elementary grades, knowing, you know, for example, when is that language arts block, what time of the day is that, and how is that going to impact their schedules and stuff? When should they expect to hear about this and find out about?
So tomorrow, families will be getting the full report, the recommendations by the committees, will be sent out to families. And the schools individually, they're, you know, because of our fast turnaround timeline with all of this, literally, teachers learned about what the recommendations were this morning, principals learned about it as well, and so now, the next two days, teams are really buckling down, trying to figure out those schedules. As far as the Reader's Workshop goes in the elementary grades, they already have that schedule pretty well established, because they've been doing it every day. There may be glitches with other supports that might have happened, or things like that, that they need to work through, but they should anticipate by Friday, I would assume, that, that they would be informed by their child's teacher around what the expectation is for logging in on Monday morning, for that particular cohort, if you will. And so I also would like to take the opportunity to mention, in addition to that, so they will be getting that information usually through their Google Classroom, that's where they'll find the link to log in, but I would wait for confirmation from their teacher or their building principal with those directions. But in addition to that, at the elementary grades, families who have students at home should still continue to log into the attendance portal on their days at home, as they have been doing. Teachers, when, during that morning meeting, will be reminding them to do that, if they haven't done that yet, but we will continue with that same process for grades one through five. When the students are not present in school and they're working from home, they should log in through the portal that they've been doing all year long.
Mr. Raxton.
Wanted to add something on to Ms. Newhouse's question about the elementary level, that in addition to thinking about the developmental appropriateness of, you know, the students receiving the instruction, we went through every subject, thinking in terms of, how does reading look taught in simultaneous instruction at the elementary level to in-person kids and kids at home? How does social studies look? How does math instruction happen? And then looking at, thinking about specialists as well, how does music happen? How does PE happen? And doing this kind of, really thinking through, how is this going to actually work based on how elementary instruction happens? Reading was very quickly identified as the one that was the most promising to work successfully in this model, and to be able to be done in a way that actually benefited the kids, rather than merely just ticking off some additional hours, but was actually going to be an effective method of instruction, and actually beneficial.
If I could just piggyback on that, this year we have been using, we have virtual units of study that our teachers have access to, that allows them to have videos and things that supplement our existing reading curriculum. So they have some of those tools, which is actually very helpful. And the workshop model itself lends itself to direct instruction for manageable amount of time for young children to attend, and then the opportunity to apply what they learn through independent practice, so, and then come back together at the end of the workshop model for the whole group wrap-up. So the structure of it lent itself, lent itself fairly nicely to what that model would be. So teachers could attend to the in-person students for small group work while class is going on, while other students are working independently, and they would still, the teacher would still be available to answer questions through the virtual meeting while the students are at home.
Other questions or comments? Just going to make, no, two, two questions or two, I guess, two comments. With the increase of synchronous time, I don't, I served in the middle school group, there was really not a whole lot of talk about homework, and that does, I don't, it does seem to be sort of an issue of, well, is there homework if they've been online all day? And so it seems as though it's been relatively controlled, but I would just reiterate that if students are online for such long hours, that they should not be, especially the high schoolers, then completing additional work, that's going to keep them on the computer so much longer. So I didn't, we didn't talk too much about that in the middle school group, but I'm assuming that this has been something that has come up in the other groups.
We actually talked about it prior to the modifications. That's been conversations we've had at the leadership level during our meetings, and the, the general rule of thumb has been that, that the only homework that really should be assigned, if any, is for students to read independently, and, or if there's ongoing projects that they need to do pieces of it for the longer-term project. So, you know, there was a lot of thought in what made sense at each of the different grade spans, but that was really, the general conversation was that we weren't assigning homework for the sake of assigning homework.
Great. And one more comment, just about students who are, will be much more synchronous now than they were prior. It is, it can be glitchy when they're trying to be on the classroom, but also complete work simultaneously, and so I think parents should be aware of that, that it can be tricky, and mainly, and so teachers will probably talk through some of that, here's some ways you can do this, here's some ways you can fill this in. But I think what can wind up happening, especially probably at the middle school level, where they're sort of, some of them are just learning how to use the classroom, and they're supposed to be doing, say, a do-now, but they're also streaming, and so they're not actually doing the, but they're listening to the do-now, but they're not completing it. Well, then what winds up happening is the student has just a very long list of to-dos at the end of the day, and that can be very overwhelming for, for middle school children, and for parents who are trying to stay on top of it for them. So I guess I would just hope that there'll be some, you know, continued work with students to say, hey, here's how you do this. If you have trouble, please reach out and let me know. And also for parents, if you know that your child is working for that full class time and not completing it, to reach out to the teacher and say, hey, they worked for forty-five minutes, here's what they completed, what do I do now? I mean, I think that just really encouraging that open communication is so important, because I would imagine they're not going to have as much time to complete work now if they're on, if they're streaming, right? And so we just want to be, I think, really thoughtful about, about that.
Absolutely.
And that's, any other questions? Mr. Raxton?
Just a comment that, given the speed with which we had to put these plans together and the speed with which we are implementing them, you know, everything is not going to be in place that we want to and will eventually have in place, and primarily, you know, in terms of technology and training, that, you know, for teachers, you know, the teachers have done this for a while, some of them, especially at the high school. have done this for a while, some of them, especially at the high school, but it wasn't, I think, for any of them easy when they began. And so for teachers who are now, uh, you know, on the fly, starting this new form of instruction, it's, I think, reasonable to expect that there are going to be some hiccups and, you know, we'll, we'll kind of start by just doing it and then it will increasingly, as we, you know, give them the proper training that they need, fill any holes in technology to make it easier for them to manage those classrooms. Uh, I think that's something that we can expect to also continue forward. But this is, you know, the way that it starts is not going to be, be the way that it goes, but we have no choice but to start. And so we're starting and we are going to continue to, uh, push forward to make sure that it is good.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Ms. Elliott. Thank you for, uh, the collective comments. And Mr. Raxdale, thank you. I could not agree with you more. As, as we are thankful to be in this place and prepared to roll out these new schedules, it is not lost upon me, uh, along the lines of your comments, that what we're effectively doing is relaunching the start of a school year, uh, in some cases with more adjustments than others, but, um, it, it will take a little bit of time and we, uh, we know that this continues to be a really difficult time on our, our families and our, our students and our staff, but, um, we will, we will get there, uh, and with some support and patience, I, I know that we'll, we'll prevail. So thank you, Christine, for the update. Three additional items under the superintendent's report tonight, if I may, uh, bring to your attention. All of them are included, uh, supporting documents are included in the packet. First, pool testing. This is a term that, uh, no doubt many have heard floating around, uh, the discussions around testing and part of surveillance, if you will, for COVID-19. The Department of Education has recently pushed out information to districts, uh, to try and get a sense of who or which districts, rather, might be interested in participating in and getting involved in pool testing. Um, the, I won't go into great detail. The information is included, uh, in, in the packet. I think I mentioned this last week, um, in which I did indicate to the Department of Ed interest in learning more about the program. Uh, and, uh, and in fact, there's another follow-up webinar, I believe, this Friday, uh, to provide more information. Uh, I think the key thing to keep in mind is we're starting to consider this, and there's again, much more information to be gathered, is that, uh, as, as I currently understand it, it's a six-week program, a six-week period program that, in which support specifically in terms of resources and the economics of it, the funding of it is supported for districts. Um, the larger question will be, how much longer beyond that six weeks does it look, uh, to, to be necessary if we're, if we're going to completely participate in this program? And how much is that going to cost, both in terms of fiscal resources and/or other supports? Um, so that's the big questions right now, the management of it, the support of it. But, um, I will report back to you. Certainly we'll have more conversations with, uh, with Ms. Crowe as well as Ms. Newhouse as, as more information is understood about that. So that's pool testing unless there are any questions. Um, item 8C, middle school program review. Uh, this, um, this went out to the community, uh, to our, all of our fifth grade parents and our middle school parents, uh, towards the end of last week. I thought I'd take the opportunity just to share it with the, the committee and the community here. Uh, and, um, uh, in short, this is, uh, this is along the lines of the, one of the, the improvement goals that you, um, supported for me at the beginning of the year, specifically, uh, looking to try and, uh, try and embark upon a study of the middle school program broadly speaking. And by program, I mean, uh, everything sort of under, under, under the roof. Uh, the program of studies, uh, the structure and the schedule. Um, and, uh, as I, I think, said in my memo and as I, I said initially when we talked about these goals, uh, it is certainly recognized that this is a precarious time to think about embarking upon, uh, such a task or endeavor. Uh, but I certainly think it's important to try and, um, I'm hopeful that we'll have volunteers, uh, and, uh, that more information is in there, again, for, um, the opportunity for members of our current fifth grade community and of course, the middle school, uh, to get involved in that. Uh, preschool and kindergarten registration information is in, in the packet here, uh, as well. And, um, this is one of those things that is reflective of our need to start to think ahead, although that's quite difficult and challenging when we don't know what, at this point in time, next school year exactly will look like. We certainly hope that it will reflect a degree of normalcy, but we don't know with certainty right now. Um, but, uh, with, um, Boutwell and Wildwood and our, the respective principals there, Ms. King and Ms. Walsh, we began the conversations around trying to get information out to the community and that's what this, um, this brief memo, uh, reflects. Uh, the registration is going to take place right now, tentatively scheduled for the latter part of March. It tends to occur earlier, uh, if I recall, but, um, that's the time period right now that we're honing in on. And part of that delay or pushing it out just a little bit is, um, with the hope that there will be more clarity around next year and, um, and how we'll, we'll be able to structure our buildings. So I'll pause there if there are any questions on, on preschool and kindergarten registration.
I don't have questions on preschool and kindergarten, but, uh, I want to, I want to go back to, um, the, the previous two items. Um, first on pooled testing, I, I'd like to say a little bit more first about how it actually works. I'm not sure if people quite understand it, that it's essentially a way of consistently, usually on a weekly basis, testing kind of the entire school population, although it can be done in, in smaller groups. And, you know, you pool everyone, so you get a group of 10 or even 15, it can even be a classroom, test the whole group. If everything comes back negative, then, you know, everyone's fine. If people come back positive, then, if, rather, if the pool comes back positive, then you immediately test everyone individually and to isolate the positive cases and then, of course, quarantine and, and identify contacts as, as necessary. And the districts that have been using this, so there were some, just some superintendents who were on the DESI webinar, um, from Salem and Medford and Watertown describing how this program worked, um, worked in their schools, or rather, just the pool testing that they were doing, and that it's really a tool to try and keep you in school as much as possible. That when you have that kind of insight is, and can identify quickly who your positive cases are, that this is what allows those districts to remain in person and to, to be able to have school. And there are definitely some, uh, big logistical and financial challenges. The, basically, the state kind of pays for it for the first six weeks of the program. After that, districts have to finance it themselves and sort of handle, there's a contractor involved that handles some of it, but the districts definitely have to do a fair amount of legwork as well. Um, it appears that there's some, perhaps some federal stimulus money, at least that's what DESI is saying, that can be used towards this. Um, anyway, I think that, uh, I really hope that it's something that we can perhaps pursue, uh, more. It does seem to be a challenge. Uh, but I think the benefits of getting that real sense of where your cases are and how many cases and how many positives you have, uh, and to support in-person learning, I think, could be really, really beneficial. And after the six weeks, I mean, amazingly, there aren't actually all that many weeks left till the end of the school year and, uh, by some measures. Um, so I, I hope that we can look further at this and, and, and come back to this, uh, at, at a future meeting. And for the middle school program, I wanted to ask if we have a sense of who, if anyone is going to particularly guide this? Like, it doesn't seem like we're engaging someone to lead this work, like, in terms of like a consultant, that we're going to be doing this, you know, in district, uh, with our own, you know, our own review and our own administrative staff. And I was wondering if we had a sense of what the scope of this review is, kind of what the charge to these working groups and these committees are going to be as far as, how much are they supposed to be thinking about? I mean, is, you know, how, how deeply are they going to potentially look at changing the models? Are we going to throw away the teaming model and not have houses anymore? Uh, you know, what, what kind of, you know, courses are we going to be offering?
I think-
I don't know that we know the answers to this, of course, but I'm curious about how we're proposing-
Yep.
-to kind of frame the scope of what this work is going to be. Because sometimes if you try to think too broad, oh, no ideas out of bounds, people go crazy and you end up with completely unworkable ideas that was, you know, completely wasted.
I think that there's, uh, and I, I will share, I already do have, um, having, having participated in this work, uh, previously, number one, but number two, um, more, more just in line with giving this some thought. I think that there's, just quickly here, and I know in the interest of time tonight, but, uh, there, um, I, I think a couple of things come to mind. First off, um, the ability, uh, to, uh, review broadly what research points to right now in terms of highly effective middle school education would be the starting point for me and I think should serve as the basis around which this work is, is shaped. And that's not to, uh, in any way suggest that what's in place is broken or not working, but it's a good opportunity to take stock of where things are lining up with what is considered highly effective middle school programs. Um, there's absolutely also, uh, lots of progressive and innovative ideas throughout this state, throughout the Commonwealth, that also could certainly be looked at. And I think there's, there's tremendous value as well in that, having experienced that in the past as well, of visiting districts and other schools and seeing what's in place. Number two, you'll remember that part of the inroad or, or catalyst for this is also taking a critical look at enrollment projections. And enrollment is a real critical component of middle school structures because unlike any other school arguably in the pre-K to 12 spectrum, when you have those teams in place, um, there are finite, there are corners, if you will, to those, that structure, unlike elementary or middle school. And the enrollment itself becomes a really important factor in considering how, um, how many students you put into that box, box meaning team. So, uh, I do have some thoughts already. Uh, and, um, in terms of the leadership piece, uh, certainly, um, it is something that I think that we can support, broadly, generally speaking, within, with our, our in-house capacity. Uh, it wasn't my thought to, to enlist a third party necessarily, but it's certainly something that, um, you know, we can keep in mind as we, as we assess. How many, how many volunteers do we have, uh, that want to be, uh, to want to be involved in that work? And, um, we'll, we'll, we'll see certainly. But, um, the scope, uh, and, and such is certainly something that, as you'll note in the memo here, is with full intention that, that come to this committee, uh, for your review and ultimately approval. Because I, I think that that's going to be important as we move ahead, before we move ahead, sorry.
Mrs. Burns?
Well, I am also wondering, talking on the, um, pool testing initiative. Um, I know that I shared a lot of questions, some concerns, um, with regards to it, you know, and thinking about the possible financial costs. Um, not sure if the federal stimulus funding would be enough to support this initiative, um, after the six weeks on top of the PPE and sanitizing, cleaning aspects that we need to ensure that we maintain, um, and healthy numbers within the district. So this, you know, I know that, I'm sure, that's all kind of, as you're learning more about this. Um, I think, and this is preliminary with what I, the materials that you've, um, shared in our packets, that I think regardless, I think six weeks, um, in light of, you know, as we're expecting, um, to see the ramifications of the Christmas holidays, uh, I think it would be a great initiative to, to participate in regardless over a six-week period, um, whether or not we do continue offering it after that juncture. Um, I, I, I think it would be, um, I think it would offer additional insight. I would love to hear, you know, do our ring pros, because I know a lot of factors are, you know, the administration of it, some of itself administers, you know, that aspect. If, you know, I have questions, would this allow a stronger sense of security, um, for staff to come back, um, into the district, knowing we have these aspects? You know, those who, um, are out for, you know, um, for their own situations because of the pandemic, um, a double layer of protection for those who are, are most susceptible. Um, but just some kind of, um, things to ponder as you gather and continue to gather the information. A little on the fence because, you know, just piggyback off of what Dave said, that, um, the pool testing piece, which is, I think, the, the nasal swab, you know, get a positive case, it's what they call a rapid, which, um, although very good, it does still have a significant, you know, what I, my layman's term knowledge of false positives and false negatives, which will then do what they call PCVR, which is a more expensive COVID test. So this will, three-step process, which is still good, but I, I hate to be spending $5 a swab for something that, you know what I mean? So it's all, I mean, I just wanted to just throw those initial thoughts out to you and, and at some juncture, um, you know, learn more about it. But I, I still think, regardless, being a part of a six-week initiative of this sort, I think would really, um, I think be more beneficial than not, um, if, you know, if we're not financially impacted.
Uh, thank you. And, and the intention would be to come back to share with you, uh, you know, more information. Certainly appreciate the, uh, the thoughts around including, um, Ms. Crowe and Ms. Newhouse, and also necessarily modeling what the financial and other implications are, uh, to be able to truly size up, you know, what, what that looks like, uh, beyond the six weeks. So.
Mr. Smaha?
Yeah, to go back to the middle school, um, thing here. Um, my question is, is how does, I mean, there's still an interim principal, um, at the middle school and how that, how this, um, sort of steering committee and how that, you know, eventually coming to have a full-time principal at that school, how those are going to be working together? I mean, I don't know if that's necessarily the time, but I'm curious, it's because if we're thinking about the direction of a middle school, um, you know, having, uh, you know, a full-time principal there, I think would be, you know, a huge part of this.
Yeah, so it's a great question. And, um, my, my immediate response would be that twofold, I think. Number one, um, we will certainly solidify the leadership position and, and, you know, that will be in place as we, uh, think ahead to next year. Uh, this work, this work will start this year, but certainly will not conclude until next year if all goes well and, and can be, you know, can be, uh, can be executed. Uh, but, but I think moreover, what I'm thinking about here in this project is the collective, uh, decision-making as opposed to one individual, uh, around sort of what the footprint looks like for the middle school going forward. And, uh, honestly, uh, even if we had a situation where, let's say it was a longstanding principal right now and he or she was retiring, you know, that, I think that this is beyond just, just with all respect, the views of one individual, but rather more from a community standpoint. Staff and, and truly our, our parents and guardians, um, you know, what's, what's the desired, uh, adjustments, changes, what have you, if any, uh, to, to best look at the longer-term operation of the facility? And that principal, the permanent principal will certainly have a, an opportunity to become involved in that work, um, once that's solidified. Um, just if, if I may, just finally, before we move on, as, um, as, uh, members of the committee and our community do know, uh, over the weekend, I, as was referenced also earlier, I sent out a letter, uh, regarding our status, uh, in terms of the unfortunate need to shift a few of our buildings to remote. And I just want to take this opportunity and certainly apologize, uh, to the community and our parents and guardians if, if the words or the sentiments that I included in my, uh, my correspondence, um, within that letter offended anybody. Uh, I've received, um, some email along those lines and certainly some of our folks here tonight expressed that. My, my intention, um, perhaps a little bit off-base unfortunately, was really to try and, uh, bring awareness to what I continue to see, the immense reality that we have before us and the significant concerns, um, around our ability to continue to operate schools in person. Um, and there's a direct correlation, as everyone's aware, uh, in terms of what the COVID numbers look like across our district, um, and our ability to do just that. Uh, and it was my effort to do nothing more than try and stress the fact that we really need the help of everybody in the community, uh, to try and help, uh, stop the spread. So again, my apologies if those words were, um, a little off-base and that communication and if I offended anybody.
We are, um, gonna move old business, if that's okay? Because I understand that Erin Crowe is on the line waiting for us. Is that correct?
She is.
Okay. And so-
Ms. Elliott, do you have the controller still or?
We are gonna, we're gonna move old business, if that's okay with the committee, um, to after 8C actually. Okay. And so we will move to 8A, which is sports participation for remote learners. Dr. Brand.
Ms. Dixie, is, Ms. Crowe, is, are you handling that or is Ken handling that? Could you grab him if, if you could? And I'll, I'll start, uh, with the presentation.
Please, right here. Oh, okay. Perfect.
So just, um, Ms. Crowe is joining us tonight, uh, and she's going to, she, we have her, not on Zoom, but on speakerphone and, um, I'll, I'll have her, uh, join in a second. Ms. Crowe, are you there? Just testing?
I'm here.
Perfect. Awesome. Okay, great. Um, so, uh, we, um, we're gonna take a few moments and go through, uh, item 8A, which is, uh, which is, was a new item added, and that's sports participation for remote learning, learners. And, and also just to provide a little bit more context in terms of, in terms of the status and, uh, the, the, the switch of, of remote for some of our buildings, that this, this presentation, rather brief, but really we'll touch upon some of the numbers involved, uh, some of the, uh, the metrics that helped inform the decision-making. Um, and then, um, at the end, actually, I do have a quick slide that we were able to pull together for staffing overview. It's all related, uh, to, um, to, to our current status. Um, this presentation is not, uh, as part of the packet, but we will make sure that it, uh, it gets there. Um, okay. Okay, so first off, many have asked exactly what the state of the state looks like in terms of athletics. And to date, and this data comes both from, as I understand it, from both Ms. Muzio, our athletic director, as well as Ms. Crowe. And we've had 11 positive cases within winter student athletes. That's the winter season, I think that's important to underscore. So that's 8% of the total winter student athletes. 53 close contacts within winter student athletics, or 38% of the total athletic count. Of those 53, 25 have been identified as close contacts on two different occasions due to multiple cases on one team. Three teams with multiple, have had multiple positive cases. And the total teams quarantined or suspended for play because of positive cases has equaled four. And they've included the boys varsity hockey team, the girls varsity hockey team twice, JV boys basketball and JV, uh, JVA, I'm sorry, and JVB boys basketball. So just some context, because I know that there's been some curiosity and, and such around athletics. I keep doing that, my apologies. The Middlesex League, there's also been some, some corresponding curiosity around that. And we have, there's 12 schools in that league. It is indeed the case that some of the schools, Lexington, Arlington, and Watertown began their year, as we understand it or as I understand it, in a remote learning model. And though did, did have sports running, I think that's an entirely different reality if one stops and sort of thinks about that for a moment, because there's no real intersection with what's happening in athletics and students in school. So I think, I just think that is important to point out. It's also though, very important to stress, I think, and just to bring light to the fact that when schools, and this is only a snapshot of Middlesex League, so it certainly can't be taken as a snapshot of the reality across the Commonwealth, for example. I would bet that it's closer to that reality, but nevertheless, Redding, when they switched to a remote learning model, they also suspended athletics. Stoneham, Stoneham has been there. Saugus, sorry, Peabody, North Andover, Danvers as well. So this is the, the specific response, if you will, for sort of temporarily suspending play in athletics, once a decision is made to, to go remote, is something that is, is not only commonplace, but also, as I'll talk about in just, in a moment, reflective of really the guidance that emerged from the Department of Education back in the summer. And, and so I think that's an important piece to note. There's a lot of text on here, but as Ms. Muzio could not be here tonight, I, I asked her to help put this together. I'll take a moment to read it, because I know that members of our committee would not be able to. But if you'll bear with me, as the previous slides have shown, the Wilmington High School winter athletics teams have not been immune to the impact of COVID-19. We currently have 11 student athletes that have tested positive and 53 student athletes that have had to quarantine. The winter season began on December 14th, and during the past five weeks, we've had to shut down four teams for COVID-19-related reasons. And two of those teams have been shut down on more than one occasion. The numbers continue to increase weekly, which causes significance concern for both athletic and academics. Despite the significant difficulties associated with keeping winter athletic teams up and running, athletics are so much more than the ability to compete. Participation in athletics is an essential part of the educational experience for so many students. Athletics promotes better educational outcomes, a sense of belonging, resiliency, and healthy behaviors, just to name a few. In a year that has brought so many challenges for students, the ability to participate in athletics helps to provide a positive outlet, human connection with teammates, and brings a sense of normalcy to students in a year filled with adversity. It is the recommendation of the athletic department that student athletes continue participation in athletics during the change to remote learning model. As the Director of Athletics, it is my goal to have our student athletes playing the sports they love, as I truly believe in the positive impact of athletics. But ultimately, my number one priority is the health and safety of our students. We greatly appreciate all of the hard work of our student athletes, parents, guardians, and coaches to maintain the necessary health and safety protocols. With that being said, we are still seeing the numbers increase in our student athletes. As we continue to see a rise in cases and more teams quarantined, I want to encourage everyone to please stay diligent. Furthermore, I strongly urge parents, guardians to go and have student athletes tested so that we're able to constantly and consistently and safely continue participating in athletics. And again, that's Ms. Muzio's words, and I thank her for taking a few moments to put those together. We're going to, we're going to shift gears here and then come back to sort of a closure and turn it over to the committee to, to weigh in on athletics. But Ms. Crowe, hopefully you're still there with us. We're up on the Health Services slide, protocols for responding to COVID. If you could just quickly go through, through those, please.
Sure, Dr. Brand, thank you, and good evening, everyone. So back in the fall, we received protocols from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for responding to COVID-19. We're not going to review all of those because we have quite a bit to review, but what we're going to focus on are the protocols for, for potential school closure. So, um, so let me just start by saying that, that if there is more than one confirmed COVID case with a student or staff in the school at one time, or if there is a series of single cases in a short time span, we are required to collaborate together with the superintendent, the school leaders, and the local Board of Health to determine if it's likely that there's transmission happening in the school. For each individual case, we do follow certain steps and protocols for a student or staff that tests positive. If there is, and, and when there is one isolated case, the students' close contacts are contacted and they stay home, get tested, and not the whole school is quarantined. When there is suspected in-school transmission beyond one cohort or a small number of cohorts, the school and the school leaders and the Board of Health collaborate together and consult with each other as to the proposed next steps. These steps should include a review of the COVID public health metrics of the municipality and could lead to, for example, making a decision to close part of a school or the entire school for a short time, maybe one to three days, for example, for an extended cleaning or other facility mitigation, or closing the school partially or fully for the longer duration of a 14-day quarantine period. If it's a circumstance where there are multiple cases in multiple schools, the school and district leader should consult with the Board of Health and discuss the proposed next steps. These steps should include the same type of review of the public health metrics of the municipality, and that could lead to the same type of decision, whether to shut down the district for a short time, for expensive cleaning, or to shut down the district for a longer duration of, of a 14-day period. The protocol for the presence of significant number of voices of minority, sorry. Go ahead and go to the next slide. Thank you. So looking at our data for the last couple of weeks since we returned from break, that's what this chart is that you're looking at. There are positive cases in close contacts listed here for students and staff combined. So in the first column, January 2nd to January 8th, coming back from break, there are a total of 16 positive COVID cases. All of these cases were acquired during the vacation break. Looking at last week, January 9th to the 15th, there were a total of 29 positive cases identified, and these were spread out over six schools. Of concern were Wilmington High School, Wilmington Middle School, the North Intermediate School, and Wilbur Street School. Further analysis shows that there were more than 80 close contacts district-wide. You'll note that pretty much the same amount of close contacts occurred the first week we were back and then again last week. Following the protocol, Wilmington Public Schools consulted with the Wilmington Board of Health, and at that time, it was noted that there were more cases involving youth or school-aged children than adults in the community of Wilmington. Also, the last eight metrics from about a week ago continue to show a 10.2% positivity rate that hasn't changed, and that should be changing soon. And that maintains the town of Wilmington in the red zone. Next slide, please.
Doreen, just to clarify, I'm sorry, are you on the rationale for changing learning models or the decision around the next one?
Um, I see decision around status of athletics. Would you like to skip that, please?
Uh, shh. Oh, okay.
She's watching on cable, which will be 25 seconds.
Yeah, right, okay.
The voices of those figures.
I actually can't see it on cable, my, my screen is frozen. I'm just, I'm just looking at the slides from my own computer.
Just to clarify, the, the, I, I see that you were on it a moment ago. The rationale for changing learning models, Doreen, did you, did you feel, did you cover that or did you want to walk through those, those bullets?
I did not cover that.
Okay.
You can go to that one next.
Perhaps, yes, please.
I'm looking for it. Oh, there it is, okay. So the rationale for changing learning models was an increase in positive COVID-19 cases in four schools. The community data simultaneously showing a greater positive case count for youth as compared to adults. One person-to-person spread was identified, instructional logistics of a large number of students in quarantine, and staffing concerns.
Thank you, Doreen. Perhaps we could just pause there and see if members of the committee might have any, they may have questions for you?
No.
Questions? Mr. Smalley?
Yeah, the one-person-to-person spread, does that, is that, does that indicate in-school spread or is that?
Ms. Crowe, did you hear that question?
I do hear the question. I'm trying to think of how to answer it the best. So that would be, it would be considered school spread, yes.
Okay, so while we have Doreen here, and thank you, Doreen, doesn't appear like there are other, there are other questions, but we'll just, just two more slides on this. So back to athletics for a moment, and this is something that I know there's a tremendous amount of interest in, understandably amongst our community. It, as I mentioned in the letter that came out yesterday, ultimately, ultimately after consulting with Ms. Crowe and, and Ms. Newhouse, first off, making this decision to move to fully remote, that was one decision, of course, but then the subsequent one was relative to sports. And as the superintendent, it's my belief and understanding of the current, current guidance from the Department of Ed, as, as mentioned earlier, that when a school is otherwise in hybrid or in-person learning and decisions relative to COVID-19 cases prompt or trigger that school to go fully remote, along with that should be, based upon that guidance, the suspension of athletics. So it was on that basis in which, in which I made that decision to suspend sports. It is important to point out, and certainly with complete transparency, that there is joint guidance from the Department of Education as well as MIAA. And that joint guidance does speak very clearly to the fact that a school committee may take action to, to allow play to continue if otherwise a school is in that fully remote status. So again, making the distinction here between schools that may not have even come back to in-person learning period, they may be offering, they may be offering sports. That's obviously not our case. So I'll pause on that. I don't know, again, if you have any questions for, for Ms. Crowe or from myself further, but it certainly is something that as a committee you may wish to consider in terms of allowing sports at the high school, at the high school level to continue, for those that are, of course, not in quarantine.
Before we take questions, would you just go back to the slide with the numbers?
Yes.
Please. Thank you.
That one there, yep.
Mrs. Burns.
So I have two questions, should you, the, you and the board consider going back? Because I see it as weighing, really, I'm absolutely, I'm completely torn, because I am absolutely in support and understand the significance of athletics and as well as other extracurricular activities on the learning and the emotional, social piece of our students. But, you know, the other part, piece that I put into this, which is, I still, is a little unusual, is the high contagion factor of the strains that are coming out and that are being identified, that have reached our waters and are within New England. But I, I wanted, part of this is, I, I want to understand the protocols, if we're in remote, are, are student athletes self-certifying every day, or every practice or every game prior to? Are there any protocols up in that capacity? Or will those things evolve depending on the conversation of the board and decision of the board this evening, as well as, what concerns me, you have two teams who are having quarantined twice. That, that's concerning to me. And again, it's kind of a pros and cons balancing scenario. It's not just athletics, it's the impact athletics will have, not only on their, each other, the fellow athletes, but also on the broader community. If students are working at market baskets and, you know, I just, I guess I'd like to understand what the protocols, what it could be, or even if those, they haven't been created, what type of protocols can we expect to see?
I can speak to that.
Please.
And Ms. Ms. Crowe, I, I'll read through them here, but if I miss anything that you, you know of, please feel free to add in. So this is coming from our athletic director, so talking with a little bit more authority than otherwise I might know. But masks worn at all times, each team is practicing as a cohort, so that is to say no movement from one team to another, JV to varsity. Daily pre-participation screening to determine eligibility to participate in athletics that day, including questions regarding symptoms and so on. Sanitization of equipment and surfaces at the end of every event, hand sanitizer stations, designated areas for mask breaks, individual beverage containers. And game day protocols include entrance and exit guidelines, no locker room use, and no end-of-game handshakes.
Will there be, just one further question. Will there, is there a hard line as to how many athletes in a cohort, if they were to become quarantined, that they would shut down that, that specific team? Like, you know how the girls hockey had to quarantine twice kind of thing? Is there like a hard line of how many, is it one case in a cohort that would shut down practice or play for that team?
Ms. Crowe, could, did you hear that question?
I can answer that question.
Great.
I can answer that question, Dr. Brand.
Thank you.
So the Order of Health or the Community Tracing Collaborative makes that determination. And the basis that they, that they make that determination on is the type of sport. So hockey and basketball, for instance, are considered high-risk sports for transmission. So if there were one case on the team, they would quarantine the entire team, including the coaches. Thank you so much, appreciate it, man.
Mr. York.
So you mentioned that when a school switches to remote, DESI, was, was the term recommends that sports pieces funded?
Uh, yes, that was part of their guidance from August. Yes, yep.
So that being the case, if we have switched to remote, are other teams in the Middlesex League willing to play us, considering DESI's guidance?
Very good question. It's one that I actually asked our athletic director this afternoon, and it's, she has no reason to believe that other districts would not play us, but admittedly, I don't know if that question outright has been, been put out there, but she's been in contact with them. There's, there's not a reason to believe that that would be an issue, but we don't definitively be sure.
Mr. Beckston.
I think the, the DESI guidance is, I think, unfortunately, it's actually the MI, the MIAA DESI joint guidance. And what's still published is rather out of date for our situation. It really is still the guidance that they published in August. And And, uh, because I was trying to find anything more recent, like have they addressed anything about ongoing sports? Because the, what they really said was that districts that are remote at the start of a season should not participate, and then without approval of the school committee, and there really, I think, is not clear guidance, uh, from DESI or the MIAA about this type of situation. Like if you're switching from a hybrid to, um, to a remote setting, uh, whether that, whether that triggers it. And I think that it, uh, they also, the original guidance is still talking about red designations back when it was the old system. There's no, there's the no recognition that they rejiggered how the whole color coding system works, uh, in the first place. Or the further DESI guidance, uh, that they essentially, I, I don't think it's official guidance, but basically the, everything that the Secretary of Education and the Commissioner have said about, "Well, really, even if you're in the red, you know, for several weeks, as long as there's no in-school spread, we recommend that you should, should stay in school." So I think that the, the DESI guidance is unfortunately out of date and doesn't quite address the situation. And it, I mean, the way I think about it is like, when school, students are out of school, then they can't be in-school spread. I mean, a big part of the, you know, the concern is always about in-school spread. There's no concern about in-school spread while the district is remote. So at least that reason should not be one that, uh, that prevents athletics from happening. But unfortunately, I think that, uh, MIAA and DESI could really clarify what the real recommendations are right now. Because I, I don't think they give as clear an instruction as what to do in this situation as we would perhaps want.
Yeah, and if I just may, I, I completely agree with that. I did, um, uh, I, I did check with, uh, the co- a contact that we have, uh, I think all districts would have at the Department of Ed, uh, that, that's probably still their same guidance, but I, I, I did check on this, and that's still their, uh, I believe it was recommendation or guidance, one of the two. So it, I think it's still what they're drawing back to, but it is not entirely clear, and it does not certainly totally address this situation. Agreed.
I just have a comment. I'll go back to Mrs. Burns's question about the attestation form. So they do complete one before every practice and every game. They're not able to practice or go to a game unless they've completed that form. And I've learned over the last few days that many te- most teams, if not all, have kept their bubbles as best they can. So they've made sort of these commitments to one another that we'll only be together. Uh, we won't do other things. We won't go out to other places so that we're able to continue our season. So I think that that's something for us to, to think about, how hard the student, how hard the athletes are working to make sure that they're able to play game and practice, but also, we're actually not in school right now. So it's sort of like, so I, I understand it because that's the guidance, but we're not physically in the building right now. So to me, there can be no safer time for them to be practicing and playing because there are no other students here. So I just, and I, seeing how many, the teams that have been quarantined and seeing that, they're definitely on top of it. They know, and we, you get the calls. They know if they have to quarantine. So it seems like in some ways, although I understand the high-risk sports, they're doing a very, they're doing the very best they can to monitor that. And so if those students are in quarantine, they're clearly not coming to school. And so I just, I'm a little like, I understand it, but I'm also thinking, at least right now, we're not in the building anyway. So why take that away as well as in-person learning? Mr. Bierke?
Just one more comment, uh, in relation to the things you said. In-school is something that we have to do. So we're very, we, we err on the side of caution. Athletics is voluntary. So if they are, if they're willing to take this risk, and the risk of, uh, school spread is minimal, or, or non-existent, as long as we're not in school, I would, I'd like to see these kids play.
Mrs. Newhouse?
I'm curious, um, are any of the current winter teams still in, um, quarantine?
Ms., Ms. Crowe, did, did you hear that question?
Um, yes. I would have to look at my data sheet to see which ones, but yes, there, yes. Yes, there's yes.
We started, I know, the week with at least one, I think two, but I'm not sure what, you know, they're cycling off at different points of course of time, so I'm not sure.
Some of them can't play right now, no matter what we do.
Right.
Um, and I guess I would have a bigger question on, and it's probably more of a question for the Board of Health, is the number of, um, of the increase of student or, um, student-aged kids, um, increasing so much, and do we know, you know, what are those numbers? I mean, we may not necessarily be seeing them just up here, um, because I'm assuming, you know, obviously, this is just kids who are in school. You know, it, how significant is, is the increase within our community for student-aged kids? Um, because that, that can be a real concern too, because they're obviously getting it from other places than just in school.
Now, Dr. Brand, I could, I can partially answer that question. I think Ms. Newhouse could answer it completely. Um, but I know what she's seeing is, um, that whole household are coming back positive. And so, and other members of the household are, um, contracting COVID first, and then the children are getting it. Uh, stay from the parents, other caregivers, or other household members that might be living in the same house.
Mr. Reckstern?
I'd like to unpack, I'd like to go back to the rationale for changing learning models slide and unpack that a bit. So one of the points on there is that, uh, greater positive case counts for youth as compared to adults. So can you explain what the concern and why that weighs as a factor in changing models? That relative to adults, there's a greater case count for youth?
Ms. Crowe?
I would see that it's, um, it's just one factor in the group of factors for the rationale, um, for changing the learning model. So when, when, so we identified, Ms. Newhouse identified that there was, um, a dramatic increase in the number of cases involving youth, um, compared to adults in the community. Um, to, to both of us, that, that is a little bit alarming, I would say, um, and, and concerning. So something to definitely keep an eye on.
I have another question. I'm sorry, can you go back to the numbers? I'm just trying to look for the, the consistency, and that's what I'm trying to wrap my head around a little bit. This is back to schools going remote, um, separate from the sports right now. So I'm looking at, the North has six cases and four close contacts. But we had five positive cases at the high school. Um, one, two to one-eight, and 25 close contacts didn't close that school. But we did close the North. So I'm just trying to say, like, what's the number, what's the magic number that we say, oh, we need to close this building down? For the, so I'm trying to make, I, for the middle school, I, we have the eight, and then we have, we have 20 close contacts. So now we're talking about pretty significant numbers as far as how do we provide instruction when we have that many students out? But for the, but for the North, I'm guessing that that wouldn't be as large a concern as even it is at, at the Woburn Street where you have eight and 11. But then looking at the numbers from the previous week, we had, like I said, at the high school, five and 25. So when, when we're thinking about these decisions, I'm just looking for some, some bit of consistency so that I can explain to community members who reach out, when it looks like this, this happens. I mean, I think people are looking, especially those of us in hybrid, are looking for consistency and able to expect the change. So if we're watching the dashboard, and we're ve- I'm very happy that the dashboard will be updated all the time now. So people will have a very real idea of what the numbers are. But I want to look at that and say, oh, it's coming. As opposed to, oh, wait a minute, it looks okay, but I got a letter that said six more. Ooh, that's probably not good for the middle school, but maybe, like, I just want some sort, and I know it's not easy to give that, but is there a way to sort of say, why this one and not that one? And can parents expect it? So I, and I know we can't answer that right now, but if we have this many close contacts, like 45, I'm just looking at it, seems like a lot. So I'm like, okay, I guess that makes sense. But is that because we can't function, because we don't have the staff, because there's too many of the staff members are in quarantine? I think to just be able to provide some consistency for families so that we can at least then say to our kids, this is coming. Last Wednesday, we sat here, we said, it wasn't coming. We all said. And we all are committed to in-person learning. I know we are. I know as a team we are. But we sat here and said, we're good, and then two days later, we weren't good. Now that's because we had so many more cases Thursday and Friday. I understand that. But I guess what's, what's the rationale on some of that?
Well, uh, first off, Ms. Crowe, do you want to, did you hear that question, and did, did you want to respond first, or do you want me to go?
Sure, yep. I can, I can speak first. So, uh, the first thing I'll say is there is no magic number. Um, we look at, we look across the school, we look across the district, um, we look at cohorts. Uh, we, we're looking specifically at homerooms. We're, we're looking at quite a bit of factors. And so there is no magic number that I could say, we can see it coming. And, and the way the data comes in is it comes in sometimes in spurts. Some days it's a little bit slower than others. Toward the end of last week, um, the data came in, uh, rapid, rapid pace. Um, and, and so that, that can be concerning as well. So, um, when you put, when you put it all together and you contact trace and play that out, um, there's not a delay in contact tracing, but the timing of the contact tracing can be a factor as well. Um, so when you get in touch with, when, when we get the results, how many, yeah, how much time has gone by, um, before we know if there's a positive case? And then contact, getting in touch and contacting all of, um, possible close contacts in the schools takes quite a bit of time for each individual case.
An additional component that, um, is indirectly related to COVID, uh, in some cases directly, depending on staff quarantine, and that's staffing. And that's, this is the final slide for this pack, but, um, it's also a component that I don't think, uh, can be forgotten. It's certainly, um, it's, it's, it's a key factor here, and so I know the color here is, is, is difficult to see, but I'll just quickly take you through this. So, number of, of openings, and you've heard me address this on a number of occasions, of course, as well, in terms of staffing availability. And there, there are, there are certainly some connections here and some trending. So, uh, the middle call, uh, the, the total number of openings is, for, for the purposes here, is defined by the total, uh, number of people that, uh, includes staff members that require a substitute teacher. We have way more opening, or way more vacancies from staff, but many don't require substitutes. But this, we're just specifically keying in on those substitutes that are required. Require substitute to the following reasons: they themselves are in quarantine, they're remote working due to, uh, uh, lack of childcare, specific ADA accommodations related to health, and/or themselves experiencing COVID symptoms. And so what you notice here is when we came back on January the 4th, we had, uh, 31 openings, 23 substitutes. January the 5th, 28 openings, 24 substitutes. That wasn't a bad day in comparison. January the 6th, and January the 13th, further on down, um, those were Wednesdays. And there, there is a, there is a pattern, uh, here. January 6th, 15 openings, and January 13th, 13 openings. Um, but, uh, as you see, as you go through, and as we went into last week as well, too. Last week was Friday, uh, the 15th, 44 substitutes needed. We had 28. Uh, 37, 24, uh, the day previous Thursday. So we were also, we were also experiencing a strain in terms of, um, total substitute supply. And, um, that's starting to dwindle, uh, as I mentioned before, around our college students. So that's a whole other component, un, again, not direct, indirectly related to COVID, um, that, uh, is something that's being tracked into, and that, this is becoming, uh, an underlying, yet, yet another underlying issue. So just to reiterate Ms. Crowe's, uh, Ms. Crowe's comments, there is, as I'm coming to learn as we work together on this, there is no one sort of singular factor, um, but it's a, it's a combination of factors, uh, that, um, uh, that's brought us to where, where we're at here right now. So, um, back to athletics, or, sorry, Ms. Re-
Mr. Reckstern?
Uh, yeah, I'm sorry. I want to keep going on this for, for a little bit, because I think this is important. So the, the staffing concerns is, of course, a, a very relevant thing. That's, that's a, you know, a logistical problem. If you don't have the staff, then there are some things you just, you can't do without the teachers to do it. But we've talked before about trying to, uh, minimize the breadth of going remote or closures, that we would rather do a classroom or a grade rather than entire schools, or in this case, four entire schools. And so I, I have some concerns, and this also connects back to some of the other factors that are, that are listed, again, in the rationale for changing models. So we have, you know, person-to-person spread was identified, but that was one person-to-person spread. So by definition, it can only have affected one school. Well, I guess it could have been more, I, I, I think, I think I'm right on my math there. That, uh, that's one school affected, uh, but we're closing, you know, we're, we're closing four schools. And, uh, you know, community, uh, showing greater positive case, case counts for youth. So that's our community cases, um, our overall positives. But again, if it's not spreading in school, and given the protocols we have in school, you know, uh, there's a strong argument that the kids are safer in school. And they're, if, if we're, if we are arguing that they're not transmitting it in school, then they're getting it outside. They're, and they are in fact getting the transmission outside of school. And so the more that they're there, the, you know, the safer they are where protocols are established and routines are established, rather than kind of just out, out in the world. And so I'm, I, I still have some concerns about the way that these factors are kind of interreact, are, you know, interacting with each other to lead to this result.
Mrs. Burns?
I, I very much can't decide what, what we're just doing, but, again, I can go back, it's, you know, people can be walking around asymptomatic, be, be able to spread it, and it's, it's a risk. And these are notable risks. Is it a, you know, a risk that we're willing to take? You know, and, because I, I, I'm, I'm living the struggle with my kids right now. And both, and I've got a daughter who's both in-person, but it's still impactful. You know, staffing is a huge concern, and, and, you know, you know, again, we, we have a highly contagious strain of this virus that has been, that is more contagious than what we saw in the spring and in the summer. Um, and there's, I think, between, I think, 20, 32 identified strains that have mutated, which is, of course, for viruses, that's what they do. That concerns me. And I know that, that risk, you know what I mean? That's something that we have to consider as we move forward. How, you know, how do we meet the needs and the responsibilities of the district, yet not put anybody at risk unintentionally? I, you know, I'm looking at it through a different lens, because I, I see what I see every, you know, when I go in, and just the numbers. And I think, like, what concerns me is that we see every morning on the news, the number of positive cases, hundreds, and deaths, um, each day, reporting. And each of those numbers is of human life. I see the aftereffects of what this disease has done, you know? I, I, it's tough to look at this and, and look, and you, our kids, and putting them, I want them, and I think that I'd bring them. The best place for them would be in schools, you know? But I worry about, about staff as well. And I, I'm just so torn by it.
I'm stuck. I mean, I think it's hard, and I don't think that there's, I don't think we're disagreeing. I'll, I'll speak for myself, not saying we did the wrong thing. I'm just trying to, as a, as a fam- as a community member and as a parent, I'm just trying to wrap my head around, why here and not here? Why now and not now? Why 14 days, why not one week? Why not one classroom? So it's sort of like, I just would love, so if, of course, the safety of our children and our staff come first. But I also want to make sure that we're making these decisions based on the facts we have in front of us. And we have said over and over again, we are prioritizing in-person learning. So if we can get anyone back in the building just a little bit sooner, can we make that shift? Can we say, hey, it looks like the cases have really died down over here. I think we're comfortable to, to start up again. I mean, I guess, I guess my, my next question is, why the 14 days? What's, what does that seem to be the, and I know it's the reset, or the, it's time enough to, but what- What's, what does that seem to be the, and I know it's the reset, or the, it's time enough to, but what if they, and I think I asked this, what if they don't go down? Like, what if, so then what? Then we do two more weeks, or then we say in two weeks, well, it looks like it's about the same, so now we'll open up again? I mean, I just, so I just want some sort of consistency across the decisions that are being made, knowing, of course, that we trust the health professionals that are around us. But just, if there's any way to get kids back in, then I would want to get kids back in. And we haven't talked about the fact that we do have four schools in, and we do have our high-needs kids in, which I think is just tremendous. And I was thrilled that it wasn't a two-week shutdown complete. But, and so I know we're doing some of that, but in looking at some of those numbers, I'm like, huh, could we have, could we have just closed down a class? I don't know. I mean, but those are the questions that are lingering for me.
They're good questions, too. I'd be better fit than that, I hope. You know, rationale of where the structure is of these decisions.
Are there questions or comments, questions for Ms. Crowe?
Thanks, Ms. Crowe, for being here tonight. Sorry to keep you waiting.
No problem. Have a good night.
Thanks, Ms. Crowe.
Thank you.
Okay. So, there's two, clearly, there's two things going on here, but should we make our way back to sports? Since that seems to be the easier of the two, or maybe the only one we could even really do anything about. Are there other questions or comments about sports? Winter sports, is what I'm referring to. Mr. Ragsdale.
So, it doesn't seem like there are any questions, so I'll make a motion that the committee approve the participation of the district in athletics at this time.
Mr. Beork, is that a second?
Yep.
And Mr. Fenley, that was another second. We have a third. Is there any discussion?
I would just add quickly that, you know, I understand the, sort of the idea behind going remote for some time for the schools, and it's unfortunate, but to Steve's point from earlier, you know, I think these kids that are on these teams sort of understand the risks and they're doing what they can to keep everything contained. So I think at the very least, we at least owe them the chance to see if they can have their season, so I support that.
All right, all in favor? Yes, that's, I think, unanimous? Unanimous? Okay. Are there any other remaining, I don't know if we can provide any more answers tonight, but I just think that these are things for everyone to think about, for those making those decisions, to think about as we move forward into the coming days. Does anyone else want to add anything, or you're good? Okay. All right. I'm certain, last week I said we were only going to do the budget, if I remember correctly. So it looks like, Mr. Rogirio, we can move 8B, is that correct?
Correct.
Are you sure?
Yes.
Okay. So then we will move right on to 8C, which is the FY '22 recommended budget.
All right, thanks, Dr. S. Okay, I am going to start it off, but my colleagues are going to join at different parts, their respective parts of the presentation, including Mr. Lord, who you know is here, as well as Ms. Brown, LaGrande, Ms. Elliott, and Mr. Rogirio will all help in taking parts of this recommended budget presentation. Quite a bit of this you have seen already, but we are exactly where we need to be in terms of the timeline for the provision of this information, just in advance of it moving forward into the town. As unconventional, as uncharacteristic of the year in so many regards that it is, there is an effort here, and we'll speak a little bit more about it in a few moments, to try and still cling to, hope still cling to the fact that at some point, hopefully sooner than later, we are able to get back with some semblance to to the work of the district as a whole, as a cohesive whole, with a foundation of, I really think, some great and important components that emerged from the vision and our mission as a district that was right alongside of and undergirded our strategic plan that was created now a little over a year and a half ago. Core values, you know, in so many respects, when I was looking at these as part of putting this together, you know, the circle of values is still, if you think about, I think each of these is still so central, even in this time period, of supporting the work that our teachers are doing, our staff are doing with our students. And while we may not have specific initiatives or action planning that is directly related to these, I hope you'd agree, and members of our community would agree, that so many of these values are shining through every single day in the work that's done throughout our, throughout our district. So, the presentation here tonight, and for members of the community who are watching, this is all included in the slide pack that is available online and can be found under the budget area of our website. This is with intention to provide members of the Wilmington community with a broad overview, 20,000-foot view, for the most part, of our, what is FY '22 budget going forward, hard to believe, of the 2021-22 school year. So we'll spend a couple of moments talking about just the general budget development process, and take a moment to return to the strategic plan and the hope with the ultimate approval of this budget of what this will help provide and support. And we'll take a few moments to dive a little bit deeper in a few moments into curriculum instruction, student support services, and Office of Information Technology. So, as always, this budget is no different than any other, regardless of where we're at in terms of contending with the pandemic and thinking ahead for a future school year that really still is to be determined in terms of its degree of normalcy. We have a fundamental obligation to really shape this budget around our fixed costs, of which we have many, and known costs, obligations, and respective assessments that help drive the budget. We have many legal mandates that I know members of the committee are aware of. Special education programming continues, of course, to be part of our commitment to provide that wherever possible in district. We do have, though, a complement of students that receive their education outside of the district. That would be an example of some of our obligations and legal mandates and such. And, of course, determining based upon enrollment, the exact sections and staffing that we have at all grade levels that really is the centerpiece around shaping our staffing plan within each, within each school building. There are some fundamental assumptions that I think are important to pause and just point out in building this budget. First off, total enrollment. We are, we built this plan around 3,133 students pre-K to 12. There are some slides that follow here that go into a little bit deeper dive for enrollment, but suffice it to say, and we'll talk more about this a little bit later, that we are, like all districts are going to have to this year, because of the fact that this is a trend that has, it dominates the conversation around budget planning and funding for the following school year enrollment projections. By all accounts, from the data that we have heard, all districts have lost students this year. And they've lost them to either private school settings or homeschooling. This is, this is absolutely a trend. The data is out there, not formalized in terms of it being pulled together, but it absolutely has happened everywhere, by all accounts, and I do think that's an important piece to point out. Enrollment, we have 65 out-of-district students that are currently part of this budget plan. That, of course, could change at any point in time, but with long-range planning that Ms. Brown LaGrande does in her office, based upon the students, their ages, and so on, there's a high level of confidence that that number is around which we need to support and ensure the fiscal resources for. We continue to count on grants and state-funded contributions that are in line with what they are this year. That's going to be an important thing to, of course, watch, if there are fluctuations or adjustments to those grants because of the budget, the budget that's unfolding and the impact on the budget relative to the COVID-19 developments. We're going to certainly make sure that we comply with legal mandates and professional guidelines as we move forward. So, enrollment. I spoke about this earlier back in December, but again, for members of the community, I just really think that this is an important piece, just expand a little bit more. There is no question that the pandemic situation has impacted in an adverse way enrollment. There's absolutely no question of that, and that's two ways, students unenrolling from WPS to participate in homeschooling. Our homeschooling numbers have gone up significantly, as well as to attend private educational settings. There's also no question about the fact that we continue to be in this place of foreshadowing a decline in enrollment, pre-K to 12 in Wilmington. That's just known, that's just been known for many a years, far before the pandemic. And it's certainly something that, generally speaking, mirrors many communities around the greater Boston area. That is also a fact, but it's no different from here in Wilmington. And we are, we are continuing on this trend of, I guess I would call it a gentle decline over a good number of years. And as it relates to enrollment, class size ratios, of course, have become an important piece of our respective planning. As was said previously, and as we look ahead, we have to make fundamental assumptions here. And those assumptions have to center around the fact that that enrollment, those enrollment, those students that we lost, given the pandemic situation right now, are slated to return. I think that's an important point to pause on, because if we don't do that, and that transpires, we will be in a very difficult place relative to our needs for class size and fiscal resources. So, it's easier to see the slide on, not on the screen, but in the packet, and it provides an overview of the pre-K to 12 enrollment. Paul, did you, I'm sorry, did you want to jump in at all with any comments on enrollment?
Sure. On this slide, the top part shows the actual enrollment as reported to the state as October 1st. And then, based on the average, we typically do a three-year cohort, what our projected enrollment would be. So the actual was about, well, it was 2889, and our projected for FY '22 was 2852. As Glenn Superintendent had alluded to, we had to make, you know, an assumption that many, if not all, of the homeschool and private school students will come back. So in the middle of this slide, you'll see adjustments, and we kind of averaged pre-K and K, and then bringing back some of the other students. And at the bottom, we show an adjusted enrollment of 3167 for this school year to get to the projected for next school year of 3133. So that's how we got to that number, you know, with the assumptions that many of these students will come back.
Just take a few moments, again, to return to the strategic plan, and again, with the absolute hope that we can restart our efforts and the good work that, as you know, so many people, so many stakeholders in our community helped contribute to some time ago, and the plan that was ultimately approved by the school committee here. We do want to make sure that our community is reminded of the fact that we have some incredibly important goals and initiatives that were crafted. They've obviously been paused necessarily, given the circumstances right now, but we have to remain hopeful that we can get back to this important work once we make our way closer to next year. This budget plan includes the identification or the earmarking, if you will, of $75,000 that we are going to direct, the intention is to direct it towards various elements of our strategic plan and the respective strategic objectives. You've seen all of these before, but just as a reminder, our focus on student learning, social-emotional learning, culture of inclusion, as well as learning environments, the four signposts and the cornerstones of the plan that was created. Just a quick overview of the intention around our strategic plan and the utilization of these funds. With the work and support of my colleagues as part of the central office team, we took a little bit of a careful look at what the specific strategic plans were from the timeframe of moving forward to next school year. You might recall that I brought those to you, and we made some adjustments, or earlier in this year, we made some adjustments to the intended timelines that have all had to be adjusted since the crafting of that plan. But as we look ahead to fiscal year '22, the '21-'22 school year, it seems appropriate to try and leverage some of these resources to support the following action steps. And first off, the, I'll come back to the vision and mission in a second, but the elementary scheduling committee, and that's 1.7A. We specifically in the plan identified the need to try and unpack the scheduling at the elementary level across all six buildings, that we have different schedules and different elements of time on learning across the district. And so that emerged through the strategic planning process as something that was important. We absolutely think that we can support that work. We're going to need some assistance, though. And so some fiscal resources will go towards that. That's the plan right now. 3.1A was the forming, so the formation of the Action for Inclusion, Diversity, and Equity Committee to review recent data and further explore district practices around inclusion and equity. And what follows from that, right directly below, 3.1B, create a vision of an inclusive environment that provides an equitable educational experience, and then 3.1C, related to the above training. These are all action steps, just to remind everyone that were generated as part of the strategic plan. And we made some adjustments, again, as I said, for the timeline, but we're looking to have this budget plan help support those with your ultimate support. I'm going to turn it back over to Ms. Elliott, and I can work this if you want.
Sure, that'd be great. Thank you. So the next few slides are related to the budget that I oversee, so curriculum and professional development, for the most part. And this first slide that you're looking at right here talks about the curriculum budget, which encompasses primarily subscription renewals, program costs for curricular programs, such as our math or science programs, some of our assessment tools. Also covers the WCTV membership dues. I'm not quite sure why that's in the curriculum budget, but that's a discussion for next year. Expenses related to professional development committee and strategic plan implementation costs are also in this budget. So you can see in the detail below some of the key highlighted items that we are purchasing, whether they are new renewal or replenishment. So our math program is a two-year renewal that we'll, for grades K through 8, that will be renewed for the next two years. Middle school social studies, as we've been aligning curriculum to the updated frameworks, we have been working towards getting each of those grade spans to that point. So the middle school purchased eighth-grade materials this year, and will focus on 6th and 7th for next year. And the high school social studies curriculum, last year, I believe, was 9th grade, and now we're moving into 10th and 11th grade, updating programs for those grades and those classes. The dyslexia screening software, we are, it was in our budget for this current school year. However, we are putting it in the budget for next year. We are working with folks right now to determine whether or not we will be doing a screening in the spring or waiting for the start of the school year. But that will be an ongoing expense eventually, so we have been in contact with them and continue to discuss our options. And Elevate Science, that's the replacement for the consumable kits for materials. It is hard to know whether we will actually need to use all of those materials, depending on how much, you know, we were able to, how much we actually used with some of the hybrid learning this year. So that will be adjusted if needed. And then, as Dr. Brand mentioned, the strategic plan-related initiatives. And in addition to that, the, there is some funding in this budget for Language Words Study Pilot for grades 3 through 5 next year. It was intended to happen this year, and with everything going on, that was halted. Next slide, please. At the last meeting, last meeting that we spoke about budget, you had asked for some information around the rollout of different curricular initiatives. And I have updated the slides that Dr. Reagan had presented last year. So this is, the snapshot is K to 2 only, and I'll show you 3 to 5 in just a moment. So we're looking at the elementary grades here. so we're looking at the elementary grades here. Initially, piloting social studies in grades K to 2, it was originally scheduled for the '21-'22 school year, but the process, I'm shifting that a little bit right now. In lieu, given the current circumstances this year, we would be working to prepare that, making those decisions about materials and all of that, so we're really shifting that. But rather than, I hope that we will be able to streamline the process a little bit once we are able to get back to some semblance of normalcy hopefully next year. So next year for K to 2, it would have typically been a pilot. What I plan to do is a social studies review, if you will, to really look at, do an assessment of where we are, figure out what we actually need, and make some decisions and work with teams of teachers to determine that. It'll also be impacted by some of the conversations we'll have around school schedules and things that we'll be looking at more systematically to make some decisions about what type of resources we need to best meet those standards for those students. And everything else is, has been, you know, consistent for K to 2. And if you flip to the next slide, you'll see in grades 3 to 5, as I mentioned, the Language Word Study Pilot was scheduled, oh, did you mind flipping to?
Sure.
There we are, thank you. Where those arrows are, you can see that the Language Word Study Pilot was originally scheduled for this year. It got shifted until next year for grades 3, 4, and 5. We'll continue that work. And again, that impacts the social studies as well, would have been scheduled for pilot, you know, and we are shifting it with, I'm going to start with a review and then make those decisions about piloting. They were spread out. K to 2 was one year, and grades 3 to 5 were the next. We will assess our ability to maybe look at all grades at the same time, if we're able to, to help move that along. So those are the key changes and updates based on that pacing, given the current circumstances this year.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Rexdale?
A couple of quick questions about this. Can you refresh on the Word Study Pilot?
Sure.
Not recalling that clearly.
Sure. So at the K to 2 level currently, Foundations is the program used to deliver Language Word Study, and in grades 3 to 5, it is less cohesive of a program. It's not a packaged program currently. It's teachers using different eclectic resources to meet those needs. So there was a, what I gather from prior conversations and information that I've received is that there was a need and a desire to look at what other resources might be appropriate for grades 3 through 5 for that Language Word Study component, basically the equivalent of Foundations but for grades 3 through 5. So that money that was earmarked was for purchasing the, some materials from certain programs to evaluate and pilot and implement in certain classrooms.
Thanks. And for the, for the social studies, all of this pilot social study, this is our shift to adopting the new social studies frameworks? This is, that's what it's connected to?
Yes, yes. It's, and it's, from my perspective, and I haven't honestly had the opportunity to discuss this with teams of teachers, given the circumstances, I really want to get teachers' perspective on, you know, where, whether or not we are looking for a comprehensive curriculum that we purchase. Are we looking for specific resources because we do certain aspects of it really well already and want to supplement? So before we automatically say we're purchasing a packaged program, I want to be able to have those conversations with the teachers to make sure that we're getting resources that are the most effective for our students developmentally and that we are able to implement within our schedules. So looking at the master schedule, I think will be an important factor as well.
Okay. And is that the, is the purchasing of materials the main budgetary factor there, or are there costs associated with doing the review?
No. I didn't actually have any budget implications for this, right, for next year. I believe with, and nothing specifically earmarked for it. The review will be, you know, more informal, so, and/or voluntary with teachers providing the information to start. However, within the professional development budget, there is some room for curricular work that if I were to pull a small group together or, you know, for a committee to really look at this in more depth, we can do that. So that's a potential for next year as well.
Okay. And one last question. At the very beginning, the request for the curriculum budget account is listed at about $350,000. The highlights give about $310,000 of that. Can you give just a quick little sense of the other $40,000?
Sure, I can. So the, let's see, the things, the district art show, for example, there's a stipend involved paying teachers to lead that art show. The ACE, I don't know if it was on there, but the ACE curriculum at the Wildwood School, the STEM Fair Planning Committee stipends. IRADI at the middle school is software license that we renew from this line. Library conferences fall in this line. Let's see, high school, you know, the textbook renewals, I think we talked about, oh, Generation Genius subscription, that is a science-based software that we purchased while our teachers, while our teachers were remote, and they're using it asynchronously that aligns with the science frameworks in our curriculum, it's supplemental, so we are trying to renew that as well.
Thank you. I didn't, yeah, I just wanted to get a little bit.
Sure. So there's a lot of other.
I knew that you said the highlights for reasons, so the rest of the list could be long.
You're welcome. Let's see, let me get back to the next slide. So the next slide is the professional development slide. So here, some of the things that this accounts for, memberships, conferences, our TLA consulting costs for our literacy training that we receive, contractual PD costs for nurses, principals, assistant principals, assistant superintendent, et cetera, and some are curriculum development costs in the mentor program. So the highlights here really are the ongoing coaching for literacy through TLA, and some are curriculum development and mapping, and that's what I was mentioning about potential of pulling together teachers to look at some of those issues around the social studies, but that also might look at, you know, alignment of curriculum and working on mapping at the high school, middle and high school level as well. So the social studies standards, alignment work, grades 6 through 11, that is earmarked separately as they've been purchasing new programs and materials to make sure that their coursework is aligned, and mentoring is included in the budget for next year as well. Any questions about professional development before I move on?
Can you just, the mentoring specifically?
So the mentors receive either a stipend or a in-service credit, but for their work mentoring their colleagues in the district. So as part of our induction program, every, every new educator with an initial, you know, without that three, without a professional license, goes through the mentoring program and receives a full-time mentor their first year, and then they continue on with the induction program for two years after that.
Okay, so this is the new teacher mentoring?
Yep.
That's the cost?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, it was what we anticipated
Okay.
the cost to be. I'm not sure what this year's will look like, but with all the new staff we have, but that's what has been typically budgeted for that.
Okay, thank you.
And the next slide is curriculum, supplies and materials. And as I've mentioned before, and I had this conversation with Paul, is that, you know, I've sort of adopted this budget. I would like to try and shift some items into the appropriate spot going forward in the lines that I have. Some of the materials seem that they're less about professional development or less about curriculum and maybe belong more in the supply line, so next year I'll look at shifting those around to be more reflective of what they are. But in this line here, we're talking about, you know, office supplies, new staff orientation costs, costs related to our professional development offered for PD days or CIT days, the Teach Point subscription for educator evaluation, the digital platform we use. And you'll see that a new initiative in here is frontline professional growth, professional development tracking software. So that is a program that it will be able to really streamline the process and digitize the process of how professional development is being, how teachers are applying to participate in professional development, how it is being approved, and how they are tracking it for relicensor purposes. Also, it provides an opportunity for when, for instance, on a CIT day, all options, or on a professional development day, all options that the district is offering are loaded into it for people to register digitally, and they go in and log in for what they want to participate in, and then the instructor has the ability digitally to just confirm all the attendance, and then the teacher, the educator has that certificate, automatically formulates in their account. It's archived forever, it's safe and secure, the company works specifically with schools, and it would help eliminate continuation of hundreds and hundreds of binders that continue to hold the walls of the Roman House up, I believe. So we have a lot of paper that we have been keeping things in paper, so it's a way to streamline that process and be far more efficient, and the amount of manual labor that we're currently using right now to process all of this paperwork, this will be a significant cost savings from my perspective, I believe. So that is actually the only new initiative in the entire, in my section of the budget. The only other thing that is somewhat new on here is, I believe Safe Schools was listed under the staff, under, on the bottom here, Safe Schools software. And we have, we're investigating, Alice Training has moved from, onto an online platform through a company called Navigate 360, so we are looking into that and moving towards purchasing at least that module possibly, so we'll, we need to evaluate if we're moving, if we're looking at Safe Schools or Navigate 360, which do a lot of the same things. Navigate 360 includes the Alice component. So that is earmarked in this budget so that we can continue to have that conversation at the leadership level and make that decision. And finally, the next slide, one of the questions, I think at my last meeting that was asked was about textbooks. What does that budget line cover? So, you know, because of the curriculum purchases in the most programs, when we're purchasing curriculum for social studies, for example, or for the high school or the math program, whatever it might be, it comes with the textbook, the workbooks, the consumables, the online license, it comes with all of those pieces together, so it really belongs under curriculum. We're no longer purchasing textbooks pretty much on their own as a standalone, that's not how they're purchased anymore. So from my own experience, the textbook line in most school budgets is really more related to individual children's literature, mentor texts, you know, purchasing classroom libraries for teachers, or six packs of books for readers workshop, that kind of thing. So that's typically what I've seen in this budget and what going forward for the next school year. The money that is earmarked is for supplementing or adding to teachers' classroom libraries in grades K through 5, and that is the only item right now for, in the textbook line proposed. In addition to that, their substitute coverage, substitute budget lines are included in this budget for professional development when we need to provide PD for, subs for teachers to participate in PD. And that is the end of my slides. I'm happy to take any additional questions the committee may have.
I just have a super fast one. The classroom library is K to 5, and so it seems like I'm always hearing that they're still wanting more. Do we have like an idea of how close are we to being
Yeah, so that's a good
in a good spot for that? I mean, I get they have to order it every year, but it does seem like I still hear that there's not enough. Is that, is that accurate, or?
So, I mean, that's a great question, and personally, I haven't really been able to get in and get a really good sense of what that is. It does take quite a while to
Sure.
create a diverse library that is multi-ranges and of interest for students, and as much as, you know, it seems like a lot of money, when you break it down to the number of classrooms, it's a very little amount of money per classroom that they're getting. So, you know, we look at it and think, wow, this is great, and then they get a little box with a few books each teacher. So I will definitely try to get a better sense of where they are and how much more they think they would need to be able to, and I do know, of course, two teachers supplement their library with their own purchases constantly, so it's, I think, a good effort.
Obviously, we'll have to order every year, but I'm just, I would, I just want them to feel like they have enough.
Absolutely.
I guess is what I'm looking for.
Yes, yes, so I will.
Maybe there's never enough, but I think they need more for the reading workshop, is my understanding.
Absolutely.
Any other questions, Mr. Rexdale?
Yeah, just, well, just tagging on to that, that when, when we were still looking at the elementary learning model and about which, you know, what we can do with simultaneous instruction, one of the issues that came up was that if students are, you know, in-person one day but then coming into the class the next day remotely, can they have the same book that they're reading? If they have an independent book that they're reading from their classroom library, how do they continue to read that same book? And there was a lot of consternation about the possibility of students taking those books homes because, you know, they might not come back, or they might not come back in good condition, and in particular, you know, teachers spend a lot of their own money on augmenting those classroom libraries. And so I think that the, you know, the more, and as you said, you know, it looks like a big number when it's in total, but divided across the number of classrooms in the district, and, you know, it doesn't go as far as you think it does when you say, ah, $15,000.
Absolutely.
And so I think that as much as we can help to, help to augment that, especially as we do some general reviews of our libraries and trying to making sure that we have, you know, a nice range of appropriate reading material. That's something that a lot of people are looking at. I have just one other question about the, so the Alice module, there was a question about whether we transition to an online training.
Dr. Brand, do you want to speak to that?
Sure. So we're exploring this now. I actually have a meeting with one of our school resource officers this Friday. There have been changes in the Alice program, and I can't tell you all, I don't understand all of them yet, but there have been apparently some shifts. Alice was apparently brought, bought out by this other company, Navi.
Navigate 360.
And so that has created in and of itself a different dimension to exploring it. We also, though, have to think about not only training, it's been some time that the district staff as a whole has been trained. We've obviously got many new employees, and then we have to explore how best to just get at this in terms of what's reasonable. Are we going to pursue train-the-trainer model, or are we going to have some combination thereof? So we started to have this conversation, to be very honest, outside of the budget process a year last fall. The Wilmington police were sharing that this was a change, their certifications, as I understand it, were going to lapse. I don't know if that was connected to just expiration or the buyout, I'm not sure, but there's some different things we have to explore with this.
Okay. This might be a conversation for really next year, but I would
Oh, definitely.
I would, I would, I think I would like to just kind of put down a marker that the whole concept about everything around the Alice trainings is something I think I'd maybe like to discuss at some point next year, even outside of these specific issues about the certification. So, FY '22.
Sure.
Mr. Fennel?
I just had one very quick question to make sure I heard you correctly. I think it was the first slide, the Envision Math Program for K to 8, the 107 and some change. That's a two-year license.
That's a two-year license. Yes, correct.
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure I heard that right.
Hi.
Hello.
Hey.
Speaking of Alice.
I didn't realize you were out there this whole time. We're good, yeah, thank you.
So the last time I was in front of you, when we were meeting last year about the budget, the Office of Student Services had a lot of positions, if you remember. We added a BCBA, we added a team chairperson, a couple of teachers in the district. This year, we don't have any positions to add, but Dr. Brandon and I thought it would be a good idea to just talk about the impact that the last year, or last 10 months and such has had on the Office of the District. Obviously, there's a financial impact to that as well, and just kind of our thoughts and concerns about things that might be lingering past this year that will obviously affect our students and have a financial impact. In general, during the course of this year, as you can, you know, imagine with the shift for for, from being completely regular school to this hybrid to remote, you know, kind of all of it, there has been a significant impact in terms of our need to acquire additional service providers. Part of that was to make sure that we were in all, you know, compliance with all evaluations and such that didn't occur during the springtime, which, when you think about it, was about a third of the school year. So it was a significant amount of time. The impact that, you know, certainly in the budget is, is there. It has allowed us to really get the district back in a place where we are, for the most part, really in compliance. Really, by December, we were able to kind of do those reevals and get the services that maybe there was elapsed. We had a lot of people that went on leaves. So we've, you know, had a lot of contracted service providers, as well as, you know, people that are long-term subpositions in the district. So, you know, the question about next year lingers as to what next year will look like for schools. So I think that that's something that we have to keep kind of in our thought process about what that looks like. If there's still a hybrid model, if there's still kind of, you know, staff that may be in, maybe taking leaves, that there will definitely be an impact around that for our office and our students. Right out of the gate, kind of the springtime, Christine Murray and obviously the district leadership recognized that there was a lot of stress in a lot of the households. We did put together some virtual series last year as well, continued that into this year, looking at everything from, as you know, for the virtual caregivers' nights, but also providing some of that to staff as well. Did that in the first few weeks of school. And it was built into some of the plans for the reopening around, you know, behavioral supports for staff and students at each building levels, you know, school reopening plan. I think the concern that we have as an office, as well as, I think, just as a community, is the increase in the mental health needs. And I think everybody obviously is seeing that. We're seeing that within our own family members. The amount of kids that we have had, that have had to be hospitalized this year is higher than ever, which is not surprising, but given the fact that they're in school half as much, is still concerning that we're seeing as many as we are, both from home and from school. And the need is clearly there. And, you know, I think if you talk to anybody in this field, the concern being that there's going to be a longstanding impact to this year for all of us, potentially for years to come. Just because we may go back to school, back to regular school in the fall, the impact of the social isolation and the stress and the family factors that's, you know, contribute to the stress is something we are going to have to contend with for the coming years. I think this has been something, at least as long as I've been in the district, that, you know, we have definitely tried to tackle, certainly from a special ed point of view, but also in terms of adding some additional staff, adding a social worker at the middle school, recognizing that there was definitely a need for this in the district. I anticipate that, among other things, this is going to be the number one challenge over the coming years. We have, over the last couple of years, partnered with McLean's Hospital. We initially started it as a consult to a program in the district. It has slowly expanded over the last couple of years to being, actually, there's a coaching model for some of the clinical staff. They do support the, continue to support our programs in the district and the teachers that teach in our social emotional programs. They've done trainings with our ed assistants. So we've used them on specific individual cases, although they're less likely to do that this year. So they have really become kind of a good partnership for us as we work towards kind of incorporating more of those behavioral health strategies and kind of the, the language around utilizing behavioral health. And, you know, all of the supports, the social emotional supports that students need throughout the school day. So we have a lot of staff that after they attend one of McLean's consult sessions, kind of always come back asking for more. So they've also run a couple of parent nights for us as well. STEAM collaborative also we utilize, and we utilize them similarly. So I think historically STEAM was utilized as a special ed service. They have a lot of really great clinical people on staff, from, you know, high-level behavior specialists to clinical school psychologists they've contracted with, who have done some great work with our program. We've utilized them on, you know, certainly on individual, on an individual case basis, but we've been able to kind of use them wider as it relates to programming in the district as well, and really also supporting some of our families. They are also, they oftentimes do a parent nights for us as well. I bring this up because I do think that over the coming years, the impact of this year, I think, is going to be significant. And I think we're really going to have to look towards making sure that we have the supports in place going forward to effectively manage the impact of what this year has been on everybody. So I think that's hard to predict going into next year, not having a sense of what next year is going to look like. But I definitely think that, you know, this focus is going to continue for us, certainly over the next couple of years. I bring this up just because these are things that we certainly worked on very hard last year, and had, we had a kind of a great plan in terms of training, things that also tie into, you know, things that are inside our strategic plan, such as inclusive practices, looking at our MTS structure in the district across the board. Just kind of to remind everybody, last year, we had ten administrators who participated in the MTSS Leadership Institute through the Department of Ed last year. We had an additional six, or some, you know, obviously some combined. That also did the Inclusive Practices Leadership Institute through DSE as well, which actually the purpose of really both of those was to develop an action plan about what the district was going to do to incorporate more of these practices. So whether it was professional development or combination of professional development and looking at policies and procedures, we actually had a really good plan, just kind of training lined up for the summer for, you know, the initial group being our extended leadership team, for lots of reasons, the main being obviously COVID, but also the structure of how do you do training with that many people now, when it was all scheduled to obviously be at the high school? And at, you know, that point, kind of where we were a year ago, thinking of doing that via Zoom was something we would never have thought of, right, to do a full day. Now we do Zoom like it's nothing. But that's something that we really need to get back on track about. So Glenn and I have, you know, collaborated on kind of the ideas around what that might look like. And I know the dates on the strategic plan have been, you know, altered a bit, but that is going to be key when we're looking at making sure that we have enough supports in place for students that are struggling, and staff, frankly, that are struggling, given the distress that everybody has been under and the impact that that might have long-term. PBIS teams, I get this question a lot, they do continue to meet. Some of them have modified what their focus has been for the year. Some of them have specifically focused on really the SEL component of the PBIS structure, looking at, really trying to figure out how to support staff and students from a self-care point of view, less about maybe those kind of external, you know, core values are still important, but less about the lessons, if you remember, that we talked about, about because all of that has changed. So what we would have taught maybe last year to a group of kindergarteners of what's appropriate behavior in the bathroom now has six feet distancing, and it's got masks and all sorts of kind of rule changes. So I think a lot of the teams felt like we needed to certainly include that, but we needed to go back towards kind of more of the social emotional component about what PBIS looks like. So a lot of the teams have modified a bit, also because it's a little harder to meet, you know, so that people are trying their best to kind of meet the demands of their positions as well as meet on the teams, but they've been meeting, you know, consistently throughout the school year. So there's not a lot in terms of budget, but I think these are things that we are going to have to think about over the coming short while, and what the impact is going to be. You know, I think at the end of the year, we need to take a look at the data around all of the needs that we have as it relates to SEL, and see where there's specific places, not from a special ed point of view, but from a larger district point of view. And I know Christine's doing that regularly when she meets with all the clinical staff to keep afloat of what buildings may be struggling more than others. Does it have any questions? Yeah?
So going to this, this, this budget? So how is the budget currently set up? Are you level funding yet?
We are, yeah.
Okay, then, and then looking towards looking at that data so that we know how to step forward?
To the form, yeah.
Going forward with the ramifications-
Right.
-of fallout or, kind of what they call it, continuing work and after restructuring.
Right.
Great, okay.
And I think, you know, there's been a number of grants that have come out this year, so some of the additional support that we've gotten from it, McLean's, the 274 grant came out, which is a special ed program improvement grant, so some of the money will be allocated that way. The question is, not to make Paul nervous, but at the end of the year, where do we land with kind of what we need in terms of support across the board with, you know, special ed programming-related service providers? And then kind of looking forward in terms of potential changes, but I don't think that's the next year.
Can I ask you, I've, I've heard of Christine's real house as well, the professional development piece-
Yeah.
-and staff. The virtual, the virtual series that Christine Murray created-
Yeah.
Is there something being created, could possibly be created for staff as you look towards that realm? I can measure what the-
So we do, we do most of our PD typically, I mean, we certainly have had PD at evening for staff. It's less successful than the CIT days are. And so, you know, this CIT day, just for example, we have high school staff that's going to be working on transition assessments and the components of transitions assessments, the incorporating transition assessment data into AP goals and objectives. You know, we have a group of subgroup working on the ACE program and having professional development on the ACE program, as well as looking at, and then, you know, I think
The more self-care-
Self-care, yeah, yeah.
That's kind of, you know, I mean, it's a, that one last play, but I think especially in the virtual-
Yeah.
-realm and the hybrid remote realm, whether, you know, having, flying in, you know, the STEAM can collaborate on this with us. Staff self-care, it's not just our teachers, it's our, you know, our assistants, it's your administrative, you know, however you want, they want worked done, however they feel most comfortable, but I'm wondering if there's, there may be some kind of, whether it be holistic, or I don't know, some kind of series that can help this self-care and, you know, on the pressures of educating students or-
Yeah, no, I can definitely look into that.
Something, just this-
Sure.
Sorry, Mr. Raxdale.
How's the move to the Arts Building been? I'm curious how that's affected the operations of your office.
It's been great. I think the initial stress was a lot of packing up a lot of information and making sure that we could still operate while that was actually happening. But the facility's great, so if you haven't had the opportunity to walk through, I would definitely do that. You know, I think that there's definitely more confidentiality, which was a concern in the building that we're at. We also have just a workspace for individuals, because we have a lot of people that come from schools, which this year is more of an issue, but they'll come in to either look at files, or they might be taking out testing materials and such, and need a place to kind of, you know, do something for a little bit, which we really didn't have before. And so I think that's a good opportunity. And now, given, you know, the, some of the restrictions, it's a kind of a separate room so that they can work in. I think it's been great. Yeah, it's been great. The files, just in terms of little things that used to be very stressful, the files are in one room. So they're not kind of split all over the place, they're in order. So it's things like that, that, believe it or not, can actually occupy a good chunk of your day when you're trying to do something quickly and it's not as easily accomplished.
I need to go outside, do a pod.
What'd you say?
Get things.
So it's been great, honestly, yeah. And I have to thank everybody, but also Mr. Lord for kind of the layout, because I had trouble envisioning an open space and how you could turn that into what it turned into. So he kind of knew from the beginning what we were doing, and I was along for the ride, but it turned out great. Yeah.
Mr. Smaha.
Hi. So there's, I guess this is sort of related to what Ms. Burns was saying, but there's no numbers or highlights on this slide, because it's basically what was there this past year is what's going to be in place for next year. So I guess my question is, and don't speculate, I mean, I guess it's a tough question, but what might the costs be? Are we looking at, you know, in the future? You know, are we talking services? Are we talking staff, new partnerships? What, do you, I don't, you must not have the sense, because you don't have the data right now, so I don't know if you can answer that question, but-
I would say initially, right, I think the, before we would be looking at positions, we would be looking at, you know, either expanding existing partnerships or looking at people's roles within the district, which, you know, is something that certainly could be looked at as well. A lot of the consults or programs or, you know, things like McLean's are things that we try to find grant funding for in one way or another. So I would anticipate that some of the grants that have been added this year probably will continue into next year, which I think will be of benefit to the district. I do think that the, the concern around the social emotional issues in the district has been something that's been there, so not just from a special ed point of view, but making sure that we have enough support and access for students. So I do think that there, we're going to have to take a look at really what the impact was this year and probably partway into next year before we have a sense of whether it's a position-related concern, or is it something that we can manage based on just kind of moving what we have around, as well as adding some additional consult supports.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Raxdale?
What parts of the Walker report have we yet to implement? What's left from their recommendations?
Caught me off guard, okay. So I had Landmark on, kind of coming in to do some consultation last spring with some of our language-based programs, and so I would say that's the big one. So they're looking to try to organize that for this spring. They stopped doing all kind of all consults, and actually, when we closed last year, there would have been no way to do that well, so to speak. So that's a big component of it. The other big piece is really that inclusive practices, training with the staff and moving towards a model of inclusive practices throughout the district, UDL, which is some of what we, you know, sent everybody to do the leadership training last year, so that we had an action plan, which we did. We had somebody actually on the hook to kind of help us do the training, facilitate the sessions, and then that was scheduled for the summer, and they just kind of got put on hold. Those are the two biggies.
If I can just say, we did contemplate incorporating that-
Right.
-as an update in this presentation, but we thought we would hold, there was enough information in here, but with intention to come back to that at some point sooner than later. Some of those budget recommendations that Alice alluded to in terms of the positions were part of the Walker recommendations, as you may recall. And there was, before the shutdown, certainly some efforts underway, and so we will bring that back to you, give you that update in terms of the status.
Okay. And is there money budgeted for the continuation of these programs for next year so that we can continue implementing them?
Yeah, so the money for the strategic plan actually goes towards some of the goal, and then I have a professional development grant. That's a piece of it, which is, actually was earmarked to do this anyway, for the, for last year and then this year. Yeah, so it's allocated already. It's not that we have to find the funding.
Thanks, Alice.
Sure, so much, Alice.
Have a good night, guys.
Thanks, good night.
Good night, Alice.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So before I take you through some numbers and some slides, I just want to first start off by thanking my department staff. We have three computer technicians, Megan Jones, Joe Pino, and a new hire, Matt Crawford, as well as our network administrator, Nathan Atwater, who are just doing outstanding work supporting our staff and students during COVID time. And I'd be lost without our OIT data assistant, Dana Burnham, and our assistant administrator, Trish Kramer, who works remotely to support everybody. They've just been fabulous to help us do all of, everything we're doing now in this interesting time. Slide in front of you is just an overview of the different lines that make up the OIT budget. This is separate from the capital budget, of course, this is just in the operations line. We did do some rearrangement of lines and priorities within the budget to be able to satisfy some needs that we have going forward. Primarily, if we go to the next slide, this year, we were, of course, there were several state grants that allowed us to purchase software to support remote learning, and we were able to rearrange our budget lines to be able to continue to support these added licenses, so that we're not losing STEAM going forward. And these are some, just a list of the different pieces of software that we're able to continue to purchase and maintain for next year for support of hybrid and remote learning. On the next slide, you'll see where we stand for teacher laptops. This is a laptop inventory across the district. We're in very, very good shape, primarily because the last two years, we did very large capital projects to replace all the teacher laptops across the district. We have a little money in the operating budget this year that will catch a few stragglers that we missed along the way. This is also primarily getting us off of Windows 7 and onto Windows 10. Windows 7, of course, is no longer supported by Microsoft. That was an important step for cybersecurity- for cybersecurity reasons. The desktop replacement slide gives you a similar view of the desktop replacements. We do have a capital request in the budget for this year to replace a number of computer labs here, three labs here with 87 computers, that's the bulk of those. A lot of the rest of the ones in the red zone are actually, a lot of computers that either are like maybe a custodial computer, something like that, or some of the computer labs that we've actually taken offline at some of the elementary schools and things. Chromebook replacement continues to be a big topic. So this year, we brought in 825 new Chromebooks across the district. So that was a big undertaking this year. That enabled us to push off some capital projects and we'll support this. We have just, just under 1,000, a little over 900, I should say, loners out on the street with students. These loners still cycle in and out as they have problems, or somebody has a problem with their computer, they come in for a loner, we help fix it, we give them their one back. So there's a lot of traffic in and out of the high school with parents dropping off and picking up loners. Dana does a lot of that work, assists me helping communicate with the parents, and then I do a lot of repairs and stuff. A lot of the newer Chromebooks, we put right out into the schools and they're in use in the classrooms. We have a program where our tech staff go to different schools each afternoon to clean carts of Chromebooks so they can move to the next classroom and be shared across around the district. The Chromebooks that we have, of course, will also be used for MCAS testing, and that testing schedule is just coming out and reshaping, so we'll see how that shakes out in the spring. Projector replacement, we do have a large capital request over the next two years to replace a lot of the pole-mounted projectors in the elementary schools. Those are the ones in the red zone. They're non-interactive projectors, they're quite old, Vongpa did dim, so those would be good to get a bunch of those going if we can get that capital project going. We did a lot of the ones at, we did all the ones at the middle school, North and West already. The high school, of course, we're done with the new, with the new project, the building was built. And I think that's all I have for OIT, unless people have questions.
Questions? Mr. Raxton?
So one of the, I know at the beginning of the year, one of the things that we did was upgrade our G Suite.
Yep.
Subscription, to use that as the LMS for the year. Are there, I mean, we already use Google in a lot of ways, so I'm sure it had the advantage of being already familiar, that people already use Google Classroom, and so you add on some additional features to support, to support the additional needs that we had. How do, I mean, if you were starting from scratch, how does the Google Suite or Google Classroom as an LMS compare with other options out there?
So Google Classroom, so there are some districts that have moved on to products like Schoolology as opposed to Google Classroom. My daughter's school actually migrated there, there's, there's from School to Schoolology, does about the same kind of thing in a little different way, at a much higher cost, to be honest. The basic suite of Google that we have is free, we've just increased and bought, gone to the enterprise version, which gives us a little few more added features of Google Meet and a lot of some security things. So for, the bang for the buck is unbelievable with Google Classroom and the things they do. I would not suggest switching stream. If I had to do it all over again, I'd probably still say go through the Google route, that's what pretty much everybody uses. So I don't think I'd do anything different, to be honest. Got your question.
And then about Chromebooks, has there been any, any thoughts that you've had about pushing the one-to-one program further down below the middle school? Because essentially, we're kind of in that now anyway, with our, you know, with the high...
Well, we are the arts.
Not in the same way, but there's, you know, we have far more Chromebooks because of, you know, our pandemic, because of pandemic, than we ever would have had on the, in a normal year.
Yep. I'm not sure I'd be an advocate of students in grades four, five and lower carrying the Chromebook back and forth, and that's what the one-to-one device is. Having more carts of Chromebooks available in the classrooms is what will be the direction I would suggest going in the pre-K through five area. So all these loner Chromebooks, once they come back, they're going to repopulate out and afford many more carts of Chromebooks for the classrooms to use in school rather than trying to bring them back and forth. So I'd probably still stick with the bring-your-own-device kind of Chromebook program we have from six through 12, because the students bringing them back and forth are a little more responsible at that age. Getting down four or five, maybe they could, maybe they couldn't. It gets a little more sticky in that level. Like, I would, I would, my recommendation would be to stick with the cart-based technology at those grades.
Okay. I think we would want to just make sure that homework assignments and at-home work was considered for the equity portion of...
Yeah.
You get used to assigning and kids being able to do work on a Chromebook, and if they're not taking it home now...
Yeah. It will be interesting how that shifts when we go back, because right now, they're, of course, doing that, they're assigning things they can do on technology at home, whereas that might, will be interesting to see how we come out of this COVID era, let's just say.
Thank you, Ked.
Thank you so much.
No problem.
Okay, the next few slides are personnel and financial, but just a little bit. So back on December 18th, superintendent, assistant superintendent, and I met the town manager and the town finance director to go over the budget. If you remember back then, we had a budget request or preliminary budget of 2.75% increase from FY '20 to over FY '21. Again, the town is so supportive of the schools. During that discussion, we were asked if we could get down to a 2.5% increase, which was about a reduction of $110,000. You know, I think what we have here in our recommended budget is fully supportable by the schools, and again, I thank the town for this support. So this personnel change slide is the same slide that we saw back on December 16th. We started the year with four, or the FY '21 budget with 489.6 FTEs. And then getting to the start of the school year, we were actually down to 487.4. We had a couple of educational assistance reductions, a student left the district and a couple of other things, teacher transfer due to enrollment, and we added a minivan driver. And then FY '22 in the budget, we actually have a .5 increase, and that's from an educational assistant moving from pre-K to K. So this recommended budget has 487.9 FTEs. The salary changes, here's where we made up the $110,000. Essentially, the numbers, the changes down the bottom, essentially it's a retirement. We verified some staff that are planning on retiring at the end of this school year, so that essentially allowed us to get, to make up $110,301, which brought us from 2.75 to 2.5% increase budget to budget. See, there's a small salary increase of almost 1,500 retirements, and then some longevity related to those retirees, or planned retirees. So that's what's incorporated in the recommended budget. Non-salary changes, this is the same slide we saw before, just to go over a few things here. Special education tuitions and other, working with Ms. Brown-Legrand, there's a reduction in some of those tuitions from both full-day out-of-district and collaborative. Number of students may not change with the placement may have, so that's, you know, there could be, if you go from a residential to a, you know, full-day, there's quite a bit of a difference in costs. Legal services, we had added some, some funding for legal services. Curriculum and curriculum supplies, Ms. Elliott went through her budget, it's about a $48,000 increase year to year, and the majority of that made up of the math correct only we had talked about. Electricity's up a little bit. Reading Municipal Light has a 2.5% increase planned, the last we heard, so we kind of factored that in. Technology, about a $60,000, $59,000 increase, made up of many, many items. A lot of those have to do with some of the, as Mr. Lord mentioned, some of the software that want to continue moving on to next year that we covered in the grant this year. Textbooks, we're down just a little bit, about $15,000, that's really because we bought LLI reading programs last year that we don't have to buy this year. Circuit breaker offset, a little bit less than we have this year, and that's anticipation of potentially fewer or less circuit breaker funds coming in next year. We don't know yet, but we're assuming that we'll get less funds. Yeah, it's not, so in the budget, circuit breaker offset's a negative number, so it's a less of a negative number, if you will.
So I know that you were kind of trying to forecast as best you can.
Right.
So I just...
So rather than level, level funding and level budgeting, I reduced the budget by 130, 40 plus.
Okay, thank you.
School office, department classroom supplies, about a reduction of about 2,000, a few different items. Maintenance repairs, down about 31,000. Big piece of that is we have the middle school doing some auditorium chair replacement, and actually, they did that today, I believe. So that was about 25,000, that was initially as budget, which you don't need next year, so we pulled that out. Professional development, a lot of that, Ms. Elliott went through. Transportation, up about 34,000, I think I mentioned last time. This will be an option year that we're going to exercise. We had the contract, a three-year contract with two one-year options. Back on May 5th of '18, town meeting approved us the ability to exercise options, and we have a contract with North Reading that included the two option years. And Julie Grisard at that time had signed the contract and so forth, so we're going to exercise that option, so it'll be the fourth year for us. That's just kind of the increase there. Athletics, there's a small increase, and that's family ID. Ms. Muzeo had wanted to move to family ID, so we included that in their, in her budget. And there's a bunch of other changes that go up and down, so about $500. So this is the same as we had last time that you saw, so it's about .7% increase on non-salary So we put it all together, our FY '21 budget is $43,722,036, FY '22, $44,815,088, or an increase of $1,093,052, or 2.5%. So that, that's kind of where we are on the recommended budget. Do you want to do capital?
Sure, 200, 250.
Yeah. All right, as you know, the town has a five-year capital improvement program, and we submit information to the town and we kind of go through it. During that meeting on December 18th, part of that discussion was also to look at the capital, what we could do as far as the different capital projects we had requested. The next slide shows our FY '22 to '26 budget. So the town had asked us if we could move some funds from FY '22, and working with Mr. Ward, we were able to do that. So a couple of the things that, that we did is the elementary projector replacement project in FY '22, on December when we met, last met, it was 200,000, we shifted 100,000 from FY '22 to FY '23. Moving down, we had some miscellaneous PC replacements and 15,000, we removed that from the capital budget. That'll be Mr. Ward's responsibility to find it someplace in his budget. And on the PA system upgrade, we moved 70,000 from FY '22 to FY '23. So we cut, or moved, actually just moved those funds from one year to the next. One number on here will change, I was talking to the town manager yesterday, and the line was that sped vans, minivan eight, six, five, and seven. The FY '22, on 34,000, will go to 42,000, so it's an $8,000 increase. Didn't have a chance to fix this slide, but it'll be fixed in the, for the budget hearing, so that, that was just a better or more accurate estimate that the town received. So the total for FY '22 would be instead of 322,000, it's 330,000, so that's what we said. So again, Mr. Ward had prioritized these items to move, working with the town, and we were able to move things around and to get it to a number the town could support and so forth.
And I'll conclude, there's just two more slides, three, but staffing priorities, it's been touched upon throughout the course of the last presentation and this one earlier as well, and this budget plan, just to confirm, does not include any new staffing priorities. That was a very different case a year ago, and, you know, the Walker report was touched upon. Also, Mr. Ward was new to the district and had just been working through his, you know, his assessment of respective needs, and there was an additional, there was an additional person added for his department as well, too. So FY '22 is, is, from a, from a budgetary standpoint, you know, maintaining our respective services and not expanding that. And, you know, this is a time for obviously a different conversation far down the road, but in terms of a view ahead, and that may not be '23, that may be far off, it's hard to determine, but I just think it's important to share with the community that, that I believe, and we have a number of areas that in time, we need to look at more holistically and consider as we think about continuing to try and improve our services and programs in the district, in no particular order. I've listed those there, I won't read each of those, but Walker report though is mentioned there, and other areas as well, too, that I think, when the time seems more appropriate, and that may again not be a year from now, we will have to wait and see, but this, this will be obviously a source of much more conversation around, around this meeting and this group as we go forward. The last, the last one is impact of superintendent and district goals, and as you recall, there were three goals that, that I brought before you that you, that you approved. One was around the high school program, the other was the middle school program, which was talked about much earlier tonight. And, you know, the possibility of budget impacts down the road. We're, we're going to try and get those off the ground, and I'm, and I'm hopeful that we can, and certainly a source of some further conversation next, next year. I know there's been a chance for a lot of questions over the course of the presentation, I apologize for the length of it. You know, the, the effort and the thought here was to try and provide more context as opposed to just put before you numbers. There's always a budget, there's always a story to a budget, I believe that, I've said that before. It was our effort to try and tell that story, and I'm sorry, it's, it's a bedtime story at this point, but thank you for, thank you for coming along.
That was very funny.
If you have any further questions, though, I'm happy to take them.
Mr. Raxton?
For the capital requests, how do we, I mean, what's the basis of coming up with the numbers that we're requesting for those projects? How do we price that out or just look into what the options are? I know they're mostly technology, so I guess that's a, a little Mr. Ward question.
So for the technology items, those all come directly out of the technology plan? And budget numbers are derived from either similar projects or direct price quotes? So for instance, for next year, the elementary projector project, I knew from last year how much it cost me per classroom, multiply the number of classrooms, come up with a budget number for that. The Genetek server, actually obtained actual quotes for that one. PC replacements, you have a standard number you use. So we kind of budget each one from, based on varying sources of funds. And then the placement of those items on, on the scale of when we do them is based upon, you know, how, the age of the equipment, how long it lasts, things like that, so our replacement cycles drives most of it.
Okay, and so ones, like when we push off one for certain years, we just, it's our best estimate of where things will be at the, at the time?
Yeah, exactly. You, most often, the price point doesn't change a lot from year to year. So it's as long as you have the, a good price point, it's really staying about the same. You know, you might buy this year, you, you know, a new model next year will cost about the same, so it's a rough, rough numbers.
The minivans, we usually work with the DPW, and the town has a vehicle inventory book, if you will, that has an estimated replacement schedule and replacement value.
Okay, thanks. I had another question about, so we talked a lot about enrollment and kind of the, just the up in the air, we don't know, we have no idea how many students are coming back next year, and so we have to just... coming back next year, and so we have to just make kind of assumptions and guesses. And I agree with the way that we approach this, that it would be, I think, irresponsible not to plan for most of them to come back, even if we have no idea if that's true. If it turns out to be less than we expect, or at least less than we're planning for, where does that leave us as far as, I mean, it seems that most of it is about staffing, so we're going to have the staff that we have for the next year. Are we just going to have maybe smaller ratios in classrooms than we otherwise would have expected and planned for? What would be the, is that going to affect anything about our operations next year, depending on what actually obtains?
Yeah, that is a great question. Paul, feel free to jump in, but I would say that inevitably, the ramifications would be in some areas, perhaps smaller class sizes, you know, that there's not, it's not the case, for example, in the budget that we're including certain startup class costs for a brand-new classroom. That's not the case. There would be, you know, an impact there. But otherwise, I mean, I don't think we would go in a different direction. The fact of the matter is, it's probable that we won't know until well into the summer, you know, I think, you know, with the status of family decisions over. And, you know, hopefully, hopefully, we'll know sooner than later. And it's been a thought, not a recent one, but now I'm thinking about that sometime in the spring, earlier than later. It would be good to be able to get that word out there to the community, to try and bring to people's awareness that the sooner we know, the better that we can plan from class placement standpoint and everything else. But if that falls short, if the enrollment is off, then we'll certainly reshape the plans in a way to try and distribute equitably students across their respective grade levels and buildings.
Okay. And I have one more, one more question. I wanted to go back to the, in the curriculum budget, the $14,400 for the classroom libraries and the mentor texts. Just because, again, across all the classrooms in the districts, it just doesn't seem to go far enough to me for supplementing classroom libraries, especially when we're also making a push for, you know, for equity and trying to get more diverse reading materials. What would it take to increase that number? I just want to throw that out there. I don't think I've ever made a suggestion of a change to a budget, but.
Go on. Mention me.
The donation?
Yeah.
Yeah, the, it is, it is related, certainly, at least to an extent. And so the, we've administratively, as the leadership team talked about, that fairly large and generous donation, they recall, that was received by the district, being approved shortly before the winter holiday break. We think it would be appropriate to, we haven't worked to enact this plan yet, but to take those funds, which was $40,000, and divide that across grade levels and buildings with specific focus to dedicate towards literacy and specifically to try and expand our diversity collection and equity collection. So we haven't, we haven't moved forward in that regard yet. That may be a little bit different, right, than just the classroom sets that you're talking about, but certainly, in terms of print resources, it's the intention. We'll come back to that plan, but, I mean, Christine, do you want to add anything more to that?
Yeah, no, I mean, I think we had talked about really making them shared collective resources within the libraries and the library media center as opposed to specific, you know, individual classrooms. So, you know, but, you know, when you look at that number that is in the budget currently, that is approximately $200 per classroom, you know, in each school when you break it down. So, you know, that doesn't, so if, you know, $200 and most books that we're purchasing, even if it was a $10, but oftentimes more, depending on what they purchase. So it doesn't lend itself to a lot, but that might help give some context. I certainly, you know, as I mentioned, can do some work to kind of get a sense of where the current classroom libraries are, how many we have, and to get some more information about that. But that is what the breakdown is. It tends to be about $200 a classroom right now.
Thank you. Excellent. All right. Moving right along. I think we're gonna, we are gonna move item 7A, and that is okay. And then we have other reports. Are there any subcommittee reports?
Just a reminder that there is a CPAC meeting next Thursday, the 28th, I believe it is, at 6:30. The links will be supplied hopefully tomorrow. And then I just wanted a quick follow-up because there was a question on the Apple Institute by the Federation. And I actually spoke with the Federation, and they have plans to announce a virtual version for this year, but not until after their Visions of Community Conference, which is on March 6. So more information on that could be forthcoming if we are interested in this year. Otherwise, look for next year.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other subcommittee reports? I thought Ms. Elliott had her hand up.
No reports, sorry.
It's like, do you have more to share?
All good, thank you.
Um, and any correspondence?
No, Ms. Elliott.
Okay. And then you did have in your packets, and MJ emailed it, her email to Dr. Brand from a week ago, and so, and if we're gonna, I wonder, she's, I know you're going, or you're gonna, so wanted to know if there was any comments on that or any suggestions?
Right. So for the most part, I would like to defer this to our next meeting for a more broader conversation, but I, there is a MASCE Leadership Division meeting on Saturday where Representative Alice Peash will be in attendance amongst others. And I didn't know if anybody, I know Jay had submitted, had emailed me, which was fantastic information. I really, really appreciate that, and it's going to help me form some questions. I'd like to form a question to get to the chair in order to present it to Representative Peash, pertaining to the MCAS piece as a diagnostic tool to collect data and the accuracy of that data and such. But I didn't know if anybody had any points that they had to formulate questions for. Representative Peash is the co-chair, one of the co-chairs of the Joint Commission of Education at State, so I just, I gotta throw it out.
And so, and you're doing that what day?
It's Saturday.
Saturday. So you don't have anything right now, but if you could just take another look at that email and send any questions or comments to MJ prior to Saturday. That would be very helpful.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Future school committee dates, we have January 25 is the town manager budget presentation. That's at 7 o'clock through Zoom. February 10, 2021, is the FY '22 budget hearing here at 7:00 PM. Our budget hearing begins at 7:05 PM.
Can I add one?
Sure.
So Finance Committee meeting on the budget is scheduled for March 4 at 7:00. I believe it's virtual. I don't have that detailed, but March 4 at 7:00.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And then just a final thing. I know the sports participation was added a little bit late, and so Dr. Brand, I do appreciate you getting all of that information together and the slideshow. So please thank Ms. Muozio and Ms. Pro for us. And if there's nothing further, just need a motion to return. Mrs. Burns, is there a second? Wow, every, almost everyone has a second. I don't know who to choose, Mrs. Dixie. We'll go with Mrs. Newhouse. All in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Good night, everybody.